If I can have all the board members grab their seats. The board met in closed session under the exception C1, C21, C11, and C13, I believe. Just for the work of the board, previous met in closed session under the exception C1, C2, C11, and C21. With that, I'd like a roll call.
Mr. Riddle?
President.
Ms. Callahan-Wozniak?
Here.
Mr. McBride?
President.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
President.
President Ewing?
Here. I would like us now to move into open session. If I can have a motion to go into open session. Motion by Mr. Riddle. Second, I heard first was Ms. Hannah. All in favor signify with aye. Any opposed, nay. We are now in open session. Pledge of Allegiance. If Mr. Silver would be so kind as to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, verity, and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator. Alright, it's now the president's report. I do not have a presentation, and I'm going to be fairly brief. Board of Education, May is a very busy time. We have something every week, all day. So please check your calendars. There have been emails that are coming out. We do have our rescheduled meeting with our IASB rep, which will be tomorrow. In addition, we have graduations, which I'm excited about for both middle and our high schools. So Mr. Allen Jenkins has sent out an email requesting for you to respond with, you know, if you can, one, attend, and two, if you would like the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Mr. Riddle, for filling in last week during the budget meeting. The budget is a moral document, and I want us to know going into next year that that's one of the things that we'll be looking at it very, very specifically to make sure that we are providing the support that our students need. So I encourage the public to look at it, as well as the board to be aware and make suggestions. I do want to acknowledge, and I know Ms. Hannah, oh, I do that first. And so Ms. Hannah is being recognized on Monday, June 20th, which is the living legend, she's receiving the Living Legend Award, and it'll be at the Juneteenth Prayer Breakfast. And this will be Monday, June 20th, at the DoubleTree Hilton Hotel in Mundeline, Illinois. So we want to congratulate and commend Ms. Hannah. Commit Ms. Hannah for her countless years of dedication to this Board of Education. I've said it before, I've said it again, to do this for 20-plus years is a statement. And we commend you for it. And this is a well-deserved award. And so I'm hoping that the board can come out and support and be there as you receive this recognition. So, thank you, Ms. Hannah. Congratulations. With that, I would also like to acknowledge the passing of someone who was near and dear to District 60, and that is our dear brother Al Rogers. He played a significant role in District 60 as a coach, as a mentor, and as a district leader. And again, I said it on Facebook, but it was 100% true, is he didn't call me often, but when he did call, you answered. And it was always with advice and encouraging word, and it always came on time when I needed it. So I do know that, Ms. Hannah, if there's something that you would like to request at this time?
Yes. I would like to request that we honor Mr. Al Rogers with a resolution from District 60. Tiredless efforts and so well done in safety and security. And he deserves the honor of a district resolution.
And I know that Mr. McBride has been in contact with the family, and so we will be coming back with more information on that. So our deepest condolences to the Rogers family. With that, I won't belabor the point or my president's report. So, thank you. Next up, we have our student board member report, just 6B. Again, I'm moving this up so that I don't get the stink out from Ms. Fulton when you are here past 9:30 or 10 o'clock on the school night.
She's not here.
She's not here. Okay. So our student board member, we had our civics project, which I could not attend because I was out of town, but I heard rave reviews about it. And so there were a couple of students who actually chose to focus on Waukegan Public Schools specifically. And so they wanted to present to the Board of Ed, and they coordinated with our student board member in order to do so. So one person could not make it tonight, but the other team member or person who presented will be here, and they will provide their presentation to the Board of Education. Civic engagement is an important part of our democracy, and I'm grateful when people say to see our students step up and want to speak to the board in order to make positive changes in their school. So we will come back to that once those individuals arrive. We are now at our special recognition and presentation, so we have 7A, which is our spotlight on 60. Carmen Buck.
I am so excited. I think I'm more excited sometimes than the students are about this machine.
I am really excited about it. It's a welcomed asset to our building. It gives a key incentive to, you know, do well and take part, you know, coming down here and getting a book out.
Which book would you like?
It provides the opportunity to take PBIS literacy and merge them together.
And also, you were showing good behavior, especially very respectful. Yes? So I will call.
Our students are able to earn cougar paws during the school day for being respectful, responsible, and safe, and showing excellence. We also have PBIS incentives for attendance.
This program, it kind of intermingles the efforts that the kids show with their academics, their behavior, and their social emotional learning.
Students are very excited to have the opportunity to get a book. They eagerly work on that week's objective. This week, they needed to collect cougar paws for being responsible and respectful during transition periods. And it really helps to improve classroom behavior within the school. They earn multiple paws throughout the week for their behavior. And then each classroom has two coins. So each week, two students get the opportunity to come and select a book. We also have a prize shop where students can redeem their paws for different prizes as well.
You know, in this day and age, it's all electronic. For the kids to have a book and they walk away with it, they can take it home with them or keep it at school. There's just something about that that brings excitement to the children.
One of the things that we need to do at school is maintain our inventory. So we're always looking for donations of newer books. We were able to give a lot of the books that we have now through our book fair that we ran. And we were able to give a portion of our book fair proceeds to buy books to go back to students.
Which book would you like?
So we want students to go home with books of interest, books that they like, books that connect to them, they're culturally responsive. A lot of our efforts for PTO next year will be to help sponsor our vending machine and making sure that we can keep a nice circulation of books in here each and every week. We see kids excited about it, wanting to earn those cougar paws. And if the students have the motivation and they want to earn those cougar paws for being respectful, responsible, and safe, the long run return is that they're going to behave, they are going to do their best and participate in class, and they're going to show us their cougar pride.
Sorry, this is moving. Board President Ewing, Superintendent Placentia, members of the board. Our new vending machine, cougar vending machine, is very popular right now. And the kids are really enjoying it. And here to share with you some of the next steps for us is our PBIS coach, Ms. Ally Lichtenstein.
Hi, everybody. I'm so glad that you got to see some of the efforts that we're doing to improve PBIS at our building at Carmen. One of my favorite things is anytime you walk down our main corridor now, you see students' faces light up when they see this vending machine. And to see such a wide variety of books that students are able to bring home, we know is a
We are now in open session, Pledge of Allegiance. If Mr. Silva would be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator. All right, it's now the President's report. I do not have a presentation, and I'm going to be fairly brief. Board of Education, May is a very busy time. We have something every week all day, so please check your calendars. There have been emails that are coming out. We do have our rescheduled meeting with our IESB rep, which will be tomorrow. In addition, we have graduations, which I'm excited about for both middle and our high schools. So Mr. Allen Jenkins has sent out an email requesting for you to respond with, you know, if you can, one, attend, and two, if you would like the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Mr. Riddo, for filling in last week during the budget meeting. The budget is a moral document, and I want us to know going into next year that that's one of the things that we'll be looking at it very, very specifically to make sure that we are providing the support that our students need. So I encourage the public to look at it, as well as the board, to be aware and make suggestions. I do want to acknowledge, and I know Ms. Hannah, oh, I do that first. And so Ms. Hannah is being recognized on Monday, June 20th, which is the Living Legend, she's receiving the Living Legend Award, and it'll be at the Juneteenth Prayer Breakfast. And this will be Monday, June 20th, at the DoubleTree Hilton Hotel in Mundaline, Illinois. So we want to congratulate and commend Ms. Hannah. Commit Ms. Hannah for her countless years of dedication to this Board of Education. I've said it before, I've said it again, to do this for 20-plus years is a statement. And we commend you for it, and this is a well-deserved award. And so I'm hoping that the board can come out and support and be there as you receive this recognition. So, thank you, Ms. Hannah, and congratulations. With that, I would also like to acknowledge the passing of someone who was near and dear to District 60, and that is our dear brother Al Rogers. He played a significant role in District 60 as a coach, as a mentor, and as a district leader. And again, I said it on Facebook, but it was 100% true, is he didn't call me often, but when he did call, you answered, and it was always with advice and encouraging word, and it always came on time when I needed it. So I do know that, Ms. Hannah, if there's something that you would like to request at this time?
Yes, I would like to request that we honor Mr. Al Rogers with a resolution from District 60. Tiredless efforts and so well-done in safety and security. And he deserves the honor of a district resolution.
And I know that Mr. McBride has been in contact with the family, and so we will be coming back with more information on that. So our deepest condolences to the Rogers family. With that, I won't belabor the point or my President's report, so thank you. Next up, we have our student board member report, just 6B. Again, I'm moving this up so that I don't get the stink out from Ms. Fulton when you are here past 9:30 or 10 o'clock on a school night. She's not here, okay. So our student board member, we had our civics project, which I could not attend because I was out of town, but I heard rave reviews about it. And so there were a couple of students who actually chose to focus on Waukegan Public Schools specifically, and so they wanted to present to the Board of Ed, and they coordinated with our student board member in order to do so. So one person could not make it tonight, but the other team member or person who presented will be here, and they will provide their presentation to the Board of Education. Civic engagement is an important part of our democracy, and I'm grateful, when people say, to see our students step up and want to speak to the board in order to make positive changes in their school. So we will come back to that once those individuals arrive. We are now at our special recognition and presentation, so we have 7A, which is our spotlight on 60. Carmen Buckner.
I am so excited. I think I'm more excited sometimes than the students are about this machine.
I am really excited about it. It's a welcomed asset to our building. It gives the kids incentive to, you know, do well and take part, you know, coming down here and getting a book out.
Which book would you like? It provides the opportunity to take PBIS literacy and merge them together.
And also, you were showing good behavior, especially very respectful, yes? So I will call.
Our students are able to earn cougar paws during the school day for being respectful, responsible, and safe, and showing excellence. We also have PBIS incentives for attendance.
This program, it kind of intermingles the efforts that the kids show with their academics, their behavior, and their social emotional learning.
The students are very excited to have the opportunity to get a book. They eagerly work on that week's objective. This week, they needed to collect cougar paws for being responsible and respectful during transition periods, and it really helps to improve classroom behavior within the school. They earn multiple paws throughout the week for their behavior, and then each classroom has two coins. So each week, two students get the opportunity to come and select a book. We also have a prize shop where students can redeem their paws for different prizes as well.
You know, in this day and age, it's all electronic. For the kids to have a book and they walk away with, they can take it home with them or keep it at school. There's just something about that that brings excitement to the children.
One of the things that we need to do as a school is maintain our inventory. So we're always looking for donations of newer books. We were able to give a lot of the books that we have now through our book fair that we ran, and we were able to give a portion of our book fair proceeds to buy books and give back to students. Which book would you like? So we want students to go home with books of interest, books that they like, books that connect to them, that are culturally responsive. A lot of our efforts for PTO next year will be to help sponsor our vending machine and making sure that we can keep a nice circulation of books in here each and every week. We see kids excited about it, wanting to earn those cougar paws, and if the students have the motivation and they want to earn those cougar paws for being respectful, responsible, and safe, the long-term return is that they're going to behave, they are going to do their best and participate in class, and they're going to show us their cougar pride.
Thank, sorry, this is moving. President, Board President Ewing, Superintendent Placencia, members of the board. Our new vending machine, cougar vending machine is, it's very popular right now, and the kids are really enjoying it. And here to share with you some of the next steps for us is our PBIS coach, Ms. Allie Lichtenstein.
Hi, everybody. I'm so glad that you got to see some of the efforts that we're doing to improve PBIS at our building at Carmen. One of my favorite things is anytime you walk down our main corridor now, you see students' faces light up when they see this vending machine. And to see such a wide variety of books that students are able to bring home, we know is a big part of their learning. Our PBIS team is working really hard in making sure that our machine stays fully stocked, using additional resources such as writing donors choose projects to make sure that we're always having diverse texts at differentiated levels that meet the needs of our students. We've also created a student survey to get feedback from them directly of what type of books they want to read, so that they are more encouraged to continue with those positive behaviors. One of the other initiatives that we've been doing is trying to really involve our students' voices and let them be heard. So now we've started a cougar paw design contest, and we get to see how creative our students get to be by them designing their own cougar paws, voting as an entire student body across the building, and then the chosen paw gets used for the entire school year. So it's been really great to see how creative our students can be.
The whole endeavor with PBIS is to increase student voice and parent voice in the process of creating an environment that is respectful, responsible, and safe for all. So thank you, yes.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Have you been able to use the kit that we purchased when we were at the, at that conference?
Oh, the play kit. I think Mr. Rice had, actually, Mr. Rice, our fourth-grade bilingual teacher, had used it as part of his class.
Oh, okay, good.
So yes, it has been used in our school.
Okay.
And hopefully, tonight, pending Board approval, he will be our climate culture, and hopefully he will use that as part of, you know, training for other teachers in the building.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Silva, can you please state what PBIS stands for?
Positive Supports and Intervention Systems, I believe? Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, there you go, yeah.
I was going to ask you, how does the parents play a role in this?
Well, our whole, because of COVID, we had a lack of parent participation, although that increased when we, this year, through our Parent Mentor Program. We're looking for our parents to lead our fundraising efforts in helping us stock that machine, as well as helping be part of the process of selecting books and be part of our PBIS teacher and staff team as well. Sorry.
A little bit of feedback. Mr. Riddo, did you have something?
I was just going to ask, Mr. Silva, I think that's a great thing. The, I love that vending machine, and I'm sure the kids do as well. Do you have, could you use more donations of books? Are you running low on some of them?
We're just starting with, we've had it going for about a month now.
Okay.
So we are okay for the rest of this school year, but next school year, we have to make sure that we're stocked with multiple and diverse books. So if you know anybody, please let me know.
I know some Lions that I think would be happy to donate some money so you can buy some more books. Yeah, great.
That would be great, thank you.
In touch base with the library, they probably got plenty of books, because I know they have a donation box, and then the community is dropping them off all the time down there. They probably got so many, they don't even know what to do with them. And on that note, I got two boxes myself that was given to me from capital charities. I'll be bringing them over there to you.
Definitely. Or let me know, and I'll pick them up. Thank you, guys.
I always just, you know, take every moment to probably make Mr. Silva feel old, but he was my seventh-grade history teacher.
I'm old.
And he taught me my civics lessons. But we thank you for what you're doing over at Carmen Buckner. And the only comment that I have is with PBIS, we want to make sure that it is enacted throughout the entire district. I think sometimes when we talk about positive behavior, I see it implemented very effectively at the elementary school levels. We see it to varying degrees of effectiveness at the middle school, but then sometimes we forget about our high schoolers. And so we don't want to just be responding to negative behaviors. We want to be reinforcing the positive behaviors that we want to see. And so we want to continue to build throughout the district and promote, not just always focusing on the negative, but how do we reward and honor the majority of our students who are doing the right things and being responsible, and get them to understand that that's the cool thing to do. So thank you to the Carmen Buckner team for what you all are doing, and that would be my takeaway for anybody who's watching, as well as for the superintendent, is to make sure that there are fun, engaging prizes at every level. And I know that that's been a comment for the high school, is if you have it, it has to be things that the kids want. And so by you all engaging and centering student voice, you make sure that this is something that they actually will find value in and that they like to. So kudos to Carmen Buckner. Thank you all for presenting.
Thank you. I just want to extend an invitation out to all the board members and Superintendent Placencia, this Thursday, May 12th, we are having our PBIS Carnival Extravaganza for students who had met their PBIS goals in, for growth in NWA map reading and math. So that starts at 4:30. If you want to stop by, feel free to do so.
Thank you so much, oh, Ms. Buckner.
We still have makeup happening, but yeah. We have tentative date, I'm just waiting for the final. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, and there was only one thing that I forgot during my Board President's report, is there, and this is for the entire community, but also the board, on the purchases and contracts, the renewal of Youth Guidance Bam and Wild for 2022, 2023, I am asking that we hold that over for additional information. And that way, it'll be presented or talked about as an information item under our student achievement meeting. So I forgot to mention that. Next up is, we don't have any minutes, but we will continue with that. We have an opportunity for public comment, I have the public comment sheet. Thank you. When I call your name, please come to the microphone. You have three minutes, which will be on the clock, once Mr. White gets back. And if you need translation services, translation services will be provided for you, and you will get six minutes to allow for the translation. We do ask that you refrain from mentioning student and staff names in your remarks. Again, this is the opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. First name on our list is Ray Vukovich. And Mr. Vukovich, when you start speaking, your time will begin.
Good evening. I'm addressing this evening to the Board of Education. You're all responsible for education, but who's really responsible for education? It's the educators, the teachers. And we've been bringing up here since December, there were 12-month employees who got extra time off for compensation, whatever that was, and several of you had indicated you were going to do something for the teachers. Here it is, a few days left in the school year, nothing has happened. The teachers, look, tonight, you got three teachers, I think three or four leaving. They're at the bottom of the pay tier. They're leaving here. The teachers, they're the ones who are with the kids. You treat them different than you do other staff. You know, the teachers, they have to have a schedule. When an administrator walks in at 10:10, they better be doing this and not that, and this. And yet, there's other employees in this district that aren't doing their stuff. And when does something happen with that? Now, you know, I brought up here that for the last six months, where are the minutes of these meetings? Eleanor Law says 30 days. I brought this up a month ago. I congratulated you two weeks ago, because there were two. Tonight, there's no minutes. You're in violation. You know, I would think one of you would pick up the phone and say, hey, this is going on, there's nothing, radio silence, we don't hear anything. So I took it upon myself and filed complaints with the Attorney General's Office and showed them all of the stuff that hasn't been done, because, you know, and the ultimate responsibility falls on the Secretary of the Board. Now, the other thing is FOIAs. Now, state law says that when a member of the public submits a FOIA, there's a five-day response time. I put something in on the first of May, it's a Sunday, that doesn't count. Monday doesn't count, you start going Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, should have had something by close of business yesterday. So I reached out to the FOIA officer today by email and just say, hey, what's the status of this? And I carbon copied your legal counsel on that as well. And I get a response back that this individual is out until the 11th. Law says five days. Mr. Morris, when he was in there, there were a group of teachers tried to help another teacher who had a personal issue, and they were doing something with sick days or whatever, and his response to them was, there is no heart in the law. So if you're going to put teachers under the microscope, the frontline people, you better make sure people in this building are doing their job, because the public is out there watching this, and they want some action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vukovich. Next name on the list is Chester McGrawski.
Well, this is to the attorney. March 21st, I sent the FOIA to you, and the FOIA said, we, the taxpayers, the Waukegan School District, have requested this information four times since the above date. We are requesting information, copies of any or lawsuits filed against the Waukegan School District 60 or its administration or administrators from August 1st, 2021, and December 31st, 2021. This should include by whom the suit was filed and the reason the suit was filed, along with outcomes of the lawsuit themselves and other settlements in detail. I did get a few things from the attorney's office. I got one from a student I didn't request, and I got one from a woman. But they sent me a bunch of stuff about taxes from Kodaire and everything else that, you know, that I did not need at all. So I'm looking forward Thursday to come in and get the request that I asked for. And also, last week, they took a reading test, the district, and I would like to, I'll be in Thursday to get the scores. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name on the list is Clyde McMoore.
Good evening, board. I had wrote a speech, but, you know, a lot has happened. First of all, I heard you mention Coach Rogers, and I heard Ms. Hannah give a little bit about him, about head of security. But I'd like to tell y'all a little bit about who Al Rogers really was. He was a mentor to a lot, a lot of people around here in Lake County that went to Waukegan. He also was the coach. His name was Coach Rogers. When you spoke of basketball, you spoke of Coach Rogers. And he was the type of person, because when I worked for District 60, they wanted me to work in security, I was a parent. And you would hear him coming down the hall, and I knew I didn't want to work for him. I left District 60 and went to Allendale, I didn't want to work for him. But he also was the co-founder for Black Lives Matter. He did a lot of things in the community, and most of all, he was my best friend. You know, so I just wanted to put that out there, because I felt when y'all talked about him, y'all was very little. I want to talk about that video I just saw. That video I just saw, you know, Carmen Buckner's in the, on the South Side, right? Get that on the South Side? That's where, when I first came to Lake County, I lived on the South Side. Used to be full of black people. I saw that video, I ain't seen not one black child, not one. But then I heard the lady say something about diversity. Diversity, I didn't see nothing in there. Well, we don't get good grades, we don't get to read books? What is it? I was really offended by that video I just saw. And then I got offended, because I got three black board members sitting up there, and they didn't even say nothing about it. I was sitting there steaming, I turned around in my seat when I was watching that video. But if you need some black books, but I'm gonna give them to you, not for the best students in the school, I want the baddest students in the school to get some books on knowledge yourself. Maybe if they turn them pages, maybe they, you know, they're at-risk students, may turn either. I'll be over there to donate some. My office is right down the street, anyway. But I really felt offended on that video, because it made me feel that that was a, and y'all know I'm for black and brown, but that was a Latino video, I didn't see not one, I didn't see a white child in it. Thanks for letting me see.
Thank you, Mr. McMoore. Next up, it just has the last name, but I know Ms. Bitner. Pass. Lightfoot. And I'm just reading them as they're on there, I'm not being disrespectful.
That's all right. President Ewing, school board members, Ms. Placencia, my union brothers and sisters, fellow staff members, and concerned community members of Waukegan, good evening. I would like to speak to you this evening about the computer and scripted programs that thousands of dollars were spent on at the last Board meeting to renew. I feel that these programs are a slap to teachers. We did not obtain degrees to read scripts and monitor computers. It quells our expertise, it takes away our passion, and it basically micromanages us. What we're diverse in, it takes all of that away. So I would like for you all to consider spending so much money on these programs. That's one reason why these students are not engaged. They're more concerned with pushing the right button than critically thinking of an answer. So I would like to offer some suggestions. When I went to school, I can remember it was Webster Junior High, now it's Edith Smith Middle School. I had home economics, and I had industrial arts. I still have the burn on my hand from home economics. We had sewing, drafting. So by the time students got to high school, they had some sort of grasp on what their ability or talent was. And I believe if we're just so hard on assessment, 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 we're not paying attention to their abilities. All students are not scholars, but that does not mean they're not valuable to our society. We need to have programs in the schools, starting in middle school, where if they're not getting As and Bs, at least they can show some success with their hands, things that they can do. I just wrote down a couple of things that I think would be a good idea, and hopefully others will think the same. When the people up here, I'm sorry, I'm remembering, talked about they're having students to design paws, that's graphic arts. If we could have something automotive, I remember teachers used to take their cars into East Campus and get their oil changed or their tires rotated. Culinary arts, basic medical and nutrition, cosmetology, music and performing arts, leadership, horticulture, and journalism. I feel that these are important things that will help our students find what their passion is and be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lightfoot. Next name, I believe it is Gullino, G-U-L-L-I-N-O? Oh, I'm Gullen, I'm sorry, I got Ms. Gullen.
Hello, everybody. Several years ago, in Detroit, at the American Federation of Teachers, I saw then Vice President Biden speak, and what he said to us really resonated with me. He said, as a son of a minister, his father used to tell him, "Don't tell me your values, show me your budget." Your budget and how you have treated the teachers and others of recent days has shown us your values. As Mr. Silva just said, he has involved and listened to the students and gotten them involved. Are we listening to the community? Your community spoke loudly and clearly before you made your decisions, but yet, we have been promised and told, we are the front lines, the teachers. We are the ones with the kids every day, and we are the forgotten. I'm sorry, we are now going to turn Lincoln Center into a school for the students that are outplaced. But yet, we bought a building on Washington Street and said we could not do anything with this building because it was too expensive to retrofit. The peace- The Peace Corps has failed because the CIA took over and they did not listen to the community. My grandfather was a missionary. He failed when he didn't listen to the community. Your staff is your greatest asset. We have listening tours, but we're not listening. We're showing PowerPoints, and we're making sure that there's no time to listen. And then, what do we do? If we do show up, which we're not always doing, we're late and no time to listen. If we don't listen to each other, what are we gonna do? You have not listened to your community who has elected you. Your budget is showing your values. And obviously, you have shown us that you do not value us as teachers that show up every day during a pandemic, that are with your students every moment of every day, that are trying and are coming. We have teachers that can't park because there's not a parking space. What are we gonna do? I've asked, I've begged, I've come, I've asked for training for our teachers as we mainstream our special education students, but nobody is listening. We're just plowing ahead with our plans. We're not listening to each other. And guess what? When you don't listen, you are going to repeat the errors of history. We are trying to clean up this country from the errors of the past, but we're not gonna do it if we don't start talking and listening.
Thank you.
And if we don't have our values. I'm sorry, some people have the timer start on time, and other people, it doesn't start. That's equity, guys. I deserve equity, too. Everybody should have that timer start at the same exact time. Not some people, not other people, but everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Gullen. Next name on the list is Kevin O'Connor. Didn't make it. Next name is Christine Lenzing.
Good evening, everyone. I was here last time. I provided stats from the ISV website, pre-COVID, to be generous. The highlights were that in the three years that we've had Ms. Placencia as superintendent, our scores have gone down. Our truancy has gone up. You cannot hang your hat on the pandemic for those facts. A common theme that I'm hearing is that our voices are not being heard. How many people were in this room last time voicing their concern over the decision to extend a five-year contract to the current superintendent? How many board members had their decision before they walked in the store? We need to be heard. We need to be heard. I want to understand, how do we, whether you are a district employee, whether you are a parent, a concerned community member? How do we get heard? Someone tell me. They say, "Go to the board meetings." We do. We talk. We're not heard. We email. Some of us get responses, some of us don't. We're not heard. Many people go to social media to get their information, to communicate, and we're told this is not the place to have that discussion. Where do we get heard? Someone tell me. Explain. I have young children. I have time to get whatever this is cleaned up. Many of our parents in our community don't have that luxury. Your data does not support that decision. Explain the data. How are you listening to us? Tell us. We want to be heard. We want to be heard. Who is listening? How are you listening? Where are you listening? What words do we need to use? What mannerisms? What etiquette? What can we do?
Keep talking.
Why? It's on deaf ears, Ms. Hannah. Who's listening? Thank you. Ms. Hannah is listening. It has been said, we voted you in to be our representatives. We are the constituents. We have concerns. These are our kids, and you're not listening.
Thank you, Ms. Lenzing. The next name on the list is Yagina Briscoe.
Good evening. Over the last months, I have been substituting in the schools and primarily focusing on the Brookside campus, because there's been a lot of things happening in the Brookside campus. So about 10 to 15 minutes before the class ends, I always take time with the students. I love the students there. And I just ask them for feedback, whatever it is that they want to say, positive, negative, or whatever. So I just want to share what they've shared with me. We feel like we're setting, we are being set up for failure. The principal's not good. We feel like we are being babyed too much. We feel like we are just being passed along. Students have no one to care for them. Elevate to teachers, elevate to teachers rather than teach math. So this was, I guess there is a classroom where the students just come in and they look at the television screen, and then this is the way that they're being taught math. This was news to me. Not, there's no connection with the students at the school. Safety is not the best. Students hanging out in the auditorium, and I'll come back to that one. That was news for me, too. Washington campus, hard to pull out. Once they, it's in a bad situation, and it's getting deeper and deeper, and the problems are getting worse. The people in charge need to wake up. There are some good teachers. There's a shortage of teachers. Some teachers not engaged. They need to get more motivated, maybe if they got paid more money. There are TVs in the cafeteria. There are TVs in the classrooms, but they're really not being used. There are televisions in the hallway, but they're being used to, I guess you can buy Schools are not preparing us for college. They need better programs to support the students. The grading system that they have at the high school is not the same as Crystal Ray. There was a young man in there, 10th grade. His daughter was in, his sister was in the 9th grade, and they compared homework for when he was in the 9th grade. And there was definitely a difference between what they're being taught at Crystal Ray in 9th grade and what our kids are being taught in 9th grade. And he clearly saw the difference. There is a grading system. He said that Crystal Ray, our grading system, they had said that it's 100%, from 90 to 100%, where at Crystal Ray, it's tighter. It's 95% to 100%. So our kids get more leeway than the kids at Crystal Ray. These kids know these stuff. Grades are just a letter grade to them, is what they said. And then they complained about the food. I wanted to come back to the cafeteria thing. Can I just take 30 seconds? Okay.
And I love Ms. Briscoe.
Okay, that's fine.
But this is the issue.
I want to comply.
I try and do it, and then I'm called out for it. So I apologize. Thank you for compliance, and I would, and thank you for being a voice when we see and a much-needed superintendent. Next name on the list is Margaret, sorry, much-needed substitute. Thank you. Next name is Margaret Karoscope.
I'm here tonight to talk about what I consider, I think many people, as adult entertainment, where a person's required to be 18 years old or older to attend. And I'm referring to the drag show that was at Abbott Middle School. Okay? I've been to a lot of drag shows. I love them. I have many, many friends. They invite me, very creative, lot of energy, but in a school, during the school day. Parents were not, well, first of all, the excuse justification for the event is that it was a Mexican historic, Cinco de Mayo, Battle of Puebla event. Parents were not notified about the event, and they weren't given an option if they want the child to attend or not. Okay? First of all, Cinco de Mayo commemorates the anniversary of Mexico's victory over the French, okay? In which there was thousands of French soldiers, well armed, and the peasants, Mexican peasants, won the war. Okay? The historical lesson, historical lesson in this is that poor working men and women rose from their homes, fields, to start to unite together, and they had a victory. Okay? Fact-checked. Cinco de Mayo has absolutely nothing to do with a drag show. If it did, hey, I'm all for it. All right? It did not qualify as an item required, it does qualify as an item required to give, because this is an adult event, to give parents the option to or out of their children attending it. And I'm talking about from the Critical Health Problems and Comprehensive Health Education Act. No student should be required to take or participate, and if they refuse, they could not be suspended or expulsion. Illinois Code 105, Section 111-3. Next, the Illinois Code specifically states that the teaching of history shall include a study of the roles and contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people in Illinois or in the United States. And I agree with that. However, that's not the case. Cinco de Mayo was, it's to commemorate a Mexican, not a United States thing. It did not qualify, and therefore, and it was not a course or class on family life. Next, I receive a photo posted in the door of a school nurse's room depicting a coat hanger with a red cross against abortion. They just continue so many incidents of school administrators pushing their politics, religious, and sexual orientation, making them
Thank you, Ms. Karoscope.
On the students, and that's wrong.
Next name on the list is Rayon Edwards.
Listening is the key word, is what they say. Ms. Briscoe, I love you to death, but I have to disagree with you when you say that if that's your first time here and that student is hanging in the auditorium, I don't know where we been, because I've come up here several times, and I've said that because we're short of staff and we're short of teachers, and they're always placed in the auditorium to do absolutely nothing. But this young lady got up here, and we're dealing with the word "listening" tonight because we do hear a lot about nobody's showing up at the meetings, nobody is reaching out. And a lot of y'all blew smoke up our backsides when y'all said that we're listening to our constituents, or we're listening to the people that voted for you. How? How? What did you listen to? None of y'all is responding to emails. For real? For real? Let's talk about it. Y'all don't have time to sit on the board, so what you run for? What you here for? What you doing? Because last week, Mr. Riddle, that was the first time I've ever heard you really shout and talk. I was impressed. But we talking about scores, reading and math, and you don't say anything. I don't hear a peep. I'm so sick of y'all, and y'all may be sick of me, but we supposed to have one thing in common, and that's the future, right? We supposed to be tunnel vision. That's what we supposed to be seeing. But they losing. They losing. I don't know how none of y'all don't see this. Our kids can't read and do math, and from the looks of it, don't look like our board can do too much reading or math. Because at some point, y'all missed the test scores. What was the goals? Because if I go in my dictionary and I look up the contract, performance-based contracts, I understand that. So how y'all miss it? Maybe we need to stop putting certain type of requirements on sitting on the Board of Education in District 60 here in Waukegan. And when I say qualifications, I mean just that, because it looked like maybe six is lacking that. And I'm trying to understand this, y'all. I don't like being nasty like this. I don't like being angry. I don't like screaming and shouting, right? I don't, but I got it in me, and I don't mind displaying it. But y'all are not listening to us, none of us. We show up at the meetings, we emailing, we talking, we all on social media. We get shut down. When is you gonna listen? How many of y'all kids go here? How many of y'all actually live where we live at? How many of y'all just experienced some of what we experienced? None of y'all. Y'all walking through y'all neighborhood and kicking grass. I'm walking through my neighborhood, and I'm kicking dirt. I'm kicking bullet shells. I'm watching my kids hang out because they ain't got nowhere else to go. And y'all want to renew Bam and Wow. Wow, me, then.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony McIntyre. I'm the founder and CEO of the Ant Mountain Foundation. I wanted to say on behalf of the Ant Mountain Foundation, we wanted to send our condolences to Mr. Rogers and his family. Mr. Rogers was a, we actually talked all the time. I was quite impressed with his lack of concern for platitudes and etiquette. He pretty much just said what was on his mind, like it or don't. You have to respect that. I found myself seeking out his advice many times. Sometimes I adhere to some of the things, sometimes I didn't. One thing about Mr. Rogers that sticks out to me is it leads me to a point that I want to make here, which is that one of my attorneys is Jed Stone. I told Jed just a few days ago that he needs to start walking around with a tape recorder so that he don't end up taking all of his knowledge to his grave. Mentor some people, because that's how you're gonna pass that information on. Well, Al mentored all kinds of people, to include myself, and he'll live through people like me. We have individuals in this district who have retired that I don't think, I hope y'all don't, don't make the mistake that some people make, where you only value the individual after they've died. And you talk about resolutions, and you'll put a plaque on somebody's wall. That's pretty. How about we value them while they're here? We have individuals that have retired from this district. Their knowledge is still priceless. I'm always looking at Ms. Vukovich. She's here. You have people like Dr. Harleen Shipley. See, it's not necessary that we agree with everything that a person says. Do you who respect it? And I think that when you look at some of these individuals who have retired from the district, I don't know, the board actually has a lot of authority. Maybe you guys need to just put like some sort of committee together of retired individuals, bring them in, and utilize the knowledge that they have. I don't know how you would do it, but I do think it's something that you should really consider. It does look, it shows the community that you actually do have, I don't know, some concern about what they're thinking. And those people, just to name those two, Dr. Harleen Shipley and Ms. Vukovich, there's many more that have retired, and you guys need to take advantage of the knowledge that they possess. That's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Last name that I have on the list. Last name that I have on the list is Randy Sobeki.
Good evening. So, the theme is listen. So, on Wednesday, April 27th, I got a text from my high school Brookside campus son. Third period, 9:16 a.m. Don't have a teacher in my literature class. No sub, anything. 9:23. I said, who are you, who are you in class with? Other students. 9:24. Oh, they just sent the security guard in. 9:28. Oh, have a sub now. 21 minutes from the time that class period started. I reached out to Mr. Ewen. My son's one of those students where he's failing multiple classes. I haven't got a reach out from no counselors. Nothing. I get a letter in the mail saying he's might be failing one or more classes, that's it. I'm a very active parent. I'm on top of my kids. But I talked to Mr. Briner at the high school, asking about this. For one, he texted me on his cellphone, "You available to talk?" I called him on his cellphone, which he gave me his cellphone number two years ago. Anytime you want to talk, give me a call anytime. I got every message from him, every conversation we had, from the time he gave it to me. Guess what? We talked. I talked to Mr. Ewen about it, and I didn't have a lot of good words. Yeah, there was some swear words said. And I asked to file a complaint against him, but I don't have to, he already wrote you guys the, the letter. Well, Mr. Briner hung up the phone on me, said, "I'm not going to listen like this. You called me on my personal cellphone. And I'm not going to listen to this. You can make an appointment with the school. Then why'd you text me on your personal cellphone? How'd I get your personal cellphone number? You gave it to me." So now all of a sudden, we just hang up. Before spring break, I asked to have a sit-down meeting with Mr. Briner. "I'll call you Monday after spring break." No response. Texted him on that Thursday. "Oh, family emergency. I'll call you on Monday." Monday came. No response. I called, I texted him on Wednesday, emailed him on Wednesday. "What about that sit-down meeting? Oh, you can call me anytime." And call, I didn't ask for a conversation. I want to know where the support is for my student failing multiple classes at the high school. You know, we're going through, he's going through family issues and that. Where's his support? Not one person reached out. Well, I ended up having a meeting with Ms. Manapatty at the high school after I reached out. And Mr. Briner was in the building that day, where was he? He wasn't in that meeting like requested. They sent the counselor in there. So is that a common theme? We give parents our, our personal cellphone numbers, so then when they complain, we can hang up on them? And then say, but he didn't mention that in the email, that he gave me his personal cellphone. It called me on my personal cellphone. Don't give it to me if you don't want, I didn't pull your number out of thin air. That's my comment. They don't listen. You know, we sit here and talk and talk and talk. There's one board member I can point to, Ms. Hannah, the only one that listens.
Thank you, Mrs. Sobeki. All right, we can get the agenda back on the screen? All right, and I do believe that our students are here, board members. Uh, okay. So if we can go back up and if they have a presentation that they've shared.
Okay, um, good evening, board members. Um, so this is, uh, my name is Avila Maldonado, and I'm a junior, and I go to Washington Campus. And this is my partner. He also is in 11th grade with me. So, um, recently, we had the chance to be involved with uh, an event that happens every year. It didn't happen last year because of COVID, but it's called MiGFA. And it's basically like um, a challenge where kids all around in like suburbs, all, all around the Chicagoland area, they all participate in a civics-themed uh, presentation day, where they pick a problem, like a civics issue that they care about, and they um, they dig and they create like an action plan as a sort of like way to tackle this issue head-on to the best of their abilities. And basically learn, like, as students, how to reach out to your community and how to start taking steps forward in taking care of these civics issues. So, um, my topic that I chose was uh, it was food waste, and it's local food waste. So initially, like, um, my initial steps in this plan was going around um, the Waukegan area. And I was just trying to gather like an, like a, a rough estimate of the amount of food that gets wasted locally among fast food distributors, um, big food distributors like grocery stores, Sam's Club, Walmart, Jalisco Meyer, that sort of thing. I, like, my main question was just like, hey, you guys would stay anonymous. I just, um, I need your spreadsheets, if you guys do have any spreadsheets on the amount of food that gets wasted weekly or monthly, just to get an idea of the amount of food waste that um, is getting wasted each year. Okay. So, I, it was kind of like a difficult process, and like, I, that's why I think like it's such a good opportunity to be involved in this kind of thing, because it teaches you like how the world is. Like, you're not always going to get an answer back. Like you said, like, people aren't always going to listen, but it just matters that the effort is there, because eventually you will be heard, depending on how much effort and, and how much diligence that you have. And holding yourself. So, our goal for this project was to get the help of our school board and lighten in our ecological footprint. We want to do this by tackling the food waste issue within our own campus cafeterias. As the school played a core part in this community already by educating all the young adults of this community, the school should reflect food ethics. We are aware that this city is full of mostly minorities, so if we have recesses to help the less fortunate to some degree, why don't we reflect it? Whether it be part, uh, packaged food or hot meals, we want the school to donate the food that isn't eaten by students delivered to local food relief centers. Um, we actually, we went out and we volunteered at a focal, uh, at a couple of local food pantries. Um, and we actually like got the chance to meet like a lot of the core people of this community that like we didn't even know are out there until like we actually went out and we put forth the effort to, to know what's going on behind the scenes. And these people are like rocks of this community, they're, they're foundations, and they're like the heart that they have. The lady, she had three working employees, and the rest of the people there were all volunteers. So it was just a good thing to experience. Um, this is just like to give you an idea on like the amount of food that gets wasted in the USA. It's uh, majority of it isn't wasted, but there's um, out of the whole uh, the US um, food supply, 30 to 40% of it is actually wasted, it becomes food waste. So, um, there's this thing, and I know like, I know I'm like talking about local food waste, but I just like want to emphasize on how big of an issue this is, that it's, it's not only here, it's, it's outside of our bounds, it's a global crisis. So, there's a process, and it's called composting. It's basically what happens after the food is wasted, where, where it goes. It goes to landfills. They have a process where they dig these giant holes, and then they dump all the food in there that isn't eaten. It ends up rotting, and it's, it's underground, so it secretes and it mixes in with all these other like produce, and it um, starts to emit toxic gases. The main one is methane, which happens to be 25 times more potent than carbon dioxide is to our atmosphere. So this is, it's important, you know? Um, I also like, like my inspiration for this project was just like, food is a base necessity. It is literally within the security needs on Maslow's hierarchy of needs. So we need to be paying attention to these issues. And if we can start local, it seems like a baby step, but any step, like, an issue will stay an issue. If the people who are in authority, the people who are in the position to make change, turn a deaf ear and a blind eye to the people who are trying to make an effort. So, a plan has multiple steps, which are not equally measured the same as the other. So although it doesn't feel like much of a step forward, we are making progress with spreading awareness and attention to this issue. Um, and I know you're probably wondering, like, how does this exactly pertain to like the WPS district, you know? So, the main thing, I was actually doing this study, and it was actually a, a UIC study. The University of Illinois, they threw us food study, and it was basically um, they're trying to figure out like the target age group that wastes the most food, and it happened to be young adults. So, that's why I feel like um, our school is trying to preach food ethics, and our school is showing that like we're going to try to network within our community and have deeper roots within people that are like, that know what it's like to, to sit here and donate food and help out the community. They know what the type, like the type of demographic that, that are receiving this food, especially after the pandemic. Like, people that weren't used to being in, in tight scenarios, they were, they were now in like a, a new world, you know? It, it's hard, but having these people who are used to these situations, being there to help you, it, it helps. And us already like somewhat dipping our toe in these waters and, and having a little bit of, of connection with these people, it helps our scenarios if anything ever hits the fan again. So, the main, like the root cause that we deducted from all of this research was the consumer mindset. Like, as Americans globally, we consume the most food, the most products. And the thing, like the main issue is that we're just like, it's so habitual that we think it's normal. But like, you look around other places, they do not consume, they don't like, oh, I see this, let me get that, let me buy that. You get like a whole feast, and you can't even finish it the next day, and you don't know what to do with it, you just end up throwing it out. And the whole time, like, Waukegan, we're not shy to the fact that we know the kind of city that we live in. We understand the demographic, the neighborhoods, the people who live in those neighborhoods. Not everybody is in a good situation, some people are less fortunate than others. And as the school playing a core part of this community, being um, the people that push out the future generations, they're, they're very important. So it's like important for us to teach students how to tackle civics issues, and it's, it's important to show students that although the school, yes, we're just here to teach you, we're also trying to help the community. We all want to be united in a way, because these are our parents, you guys have some kids in the school as well. We're, we need to show that unity. We need to show that we're all putting forth an effort, because as a community, that's what that stands for. So I, uh, like naturally, um, I reached out to a lady by the name of Natalie Richter. I'm not sure if she's here right now, but I believe she's the general manager for all the cafeteria, the cafeterias and the campuses. She was really difficult, like she did not want to help me at all, she was like really reluctant. I remember, like, so, okay, shoot, whoa, okay. Let me give you more background, more context. So basically, I called her, and the thing is, this is my first time doing this, but like I'm still trying, I'm still making an effort. And I called her and it was past, it was like, what, I believe it was like 4:30, near 5:00. And she ended up answering thankfully, right? But she's like, you know what? Um, she was like pretty condescending. She said, you know, this is, it's about to be 5:00 o'clock, you're calling me on, on my work phone. Like, I'm about to leave, I have to manage 22 other schools in this, in this district. Um, you're going to have to call me back on Monday. I called her four times on Monday, and I didn't do it all back-to-back. It was twice in the morning, then twice in the afternoon, to give it like a little bit of time span. No response at all. I eventually just like gave up on that, because I know she's not who I really need to talk to. It's Alicia Williams, who's the transportation and nutritional officer of the school. But I just wanted to like get more information that I could from someone that like obtains it, you know? So, here's just the, oh, it's not up there. Oh, yeah. This is just like a graph of um, the different areas that like have the highest amounts of, of food waste in, in our um, country. And then this is, these are the age groups, which is like young adults, 17 and 24-year-olds. And this was my action plan, or just an idea of like the, the steps that we could potentially take. Understand that there's a lot of legality issues and regulations surrounding this issue as, with food, because there's a lot of red tape around it. But like, even if we could just get a food program, and it already exists in Brookside, I believe, um, because I had a teacher that used to do it, where like students that didn't finish all of their, their lunch, they maybe had an apple, a wrapped-up sandwich, a fruit cup, and they could put it in this fridge or like in a container, and it had like the, the stamp on it that said food waste program. So another hungry kid who was like wanting something to snack on, or just wanted some food to bring home, could come by, snatch that up, and take it home with them. And it's just like an everyday thing, because like, we witness it every single day. Like, just lunch, kids will like throw half of their lunches that is untouched, you know? Our idea was like, maybe we can set up some racks in, in the lunchroom. All the food that doesn't get eaten can get put on there. It'll get uh, put in the back of the cafeteria until a set-out date. It doesn't have to be every day, but I want the school to potentially become donators, not money-wise, just, just resource-wise as far as foods, um, to donate to local food relief centers, food banks, food pantries. Um, I have a list, actually, here. So these are, they're not, these aren't all the locations, mind you, but these are just a few locations that are local in Waukegan that accept hot meals, because we do serve like hot meals, the majority of, of it is lunches. As far as like breakfasts, it's more packaged. We can prob, we can probably like give that out to food pantries, but maybe it can just be like one set-out day where we can donate, and um, just have like the nutritional trucks go out to these places once a week. And then after that, um, you, it's just like, it's, it's, it's reflecting our effort. So I think like, although it's a big issue, it's way farther than us, it's, it's way past us. Taking these little steps, it shows that we care about this issue. It shows that, yes, like, we understand that people are, are going to consume, they're going to waste, but it shows that if we're taking a step as, as far as trying to be minimalist, or trying to be more conscious of our decisions as far as wasting so much food, and as far as trying to have deeper roots within our community, showing that like, maybe we won't be able to meet all the very high expectations of all these parents in these rooms, all these teachers. We, we're still making an effort to, to have roots within our community, outside of just the school. In conclusion, this topic will continue to be an issue. If the people who are in the position to change within their domain continue to turn a blind eye to the problems that are happening in their community. Our campuses need to be more involved in solving these issues locally. Help show young adults how to take action on civics issues early on to preserve our planet and to spread humanity. And that's around.
I wanted to say a big thank you to Abby and Giovanni for coming here. I feel that as we students, when we come here and we express our concerns and our voices, we're really heard, because as like the board members, you guys, you know, you guys are working with us, and as students, our voice is very important. So, thank you very much. You guys are so good, by the way.
They did. Can you show the board your, uh, just turn it this way, I know it was pointing towards the audience, so everybody can see it. Your presentation was awesome. Oh, just turn, yeah, just for you. Awesome. So again, this is what I talk about with our students who do amazing work. This is something that we can work together on to address, and I appreciate you guys, uh, bringing it forward. This has been a concern, and when you talk about information, one of the things of our food service program, and you put it down, boss, I just wanted them to see the hard work that you did. Thank you. Uh, one of the things that we talk about with our food service program is that you have to take everything. So if my kid only wants the apple, they have to take a full lunch in order to get the count, right? What do you do with that food after it's done? So, um, I think this is something that we can help tackle. I also want to commend, um, is that we do have to hear our, our, our students' perspective. Is a lot of times, and we talked about this at the Cube Conference, which will be coming up, is that what one student said when they were on the stage, which brought me to tears, um, was that when they walked into the school building, they thought that their high school experience was supposed to center them. And what they realized very, very quickly is that their high school experience didn't center them, it centered many of the adults who were in the room. This was from the perspective of a um, student, so I don't know the entire situation. But when they are vocalizing that I reached out to this individual who I wanted information from, and this was how I felt about it, I hope that that's the takeaway, is that when our students are reaching out, looking for information, looking for the adults who are in their lives in order to impact them, is that we do have to make sure that we take the time. It's because this is something that I'm glad you brought to the board and that we can address. But it's also opportunities at your building, uh, which our student board member has been really good at, to get collaboration. But food waste is a huge issue, and thank you for doing the work and the research, and for informing us and our community of the issue, and stepping up to solve the problem, right? Thank you, Ms. I got you. I got you. Ms. Hannah?
Yeah, I just, I, I want to ask, um, what do you need the Board of Education to do to help you move this initiative? What do you need us to do?
Probably just to like, uh,
And I do apologize, but because there are people who are watching on YouTube, would you be so kind as to walk up to the microphone?
Um, I think that probably I just need more information on like the legal
I would do issues, because I'm not
Like, very educated in that realm, but um, I know that there's like a lot of red tape as far as like liability if someone eats the food that gets sick, then it comes from District 60, you could potentially get sued, something like that. I even got the information of the district's lawyer, but I didn't exactly know what I could say to her, because it's just like I didn't have enough people within the school, or like that have authority in the school, that helped me and, and like in order to like, I have like, when you're doing an action project, there's a chain of people, just like there's a chain of steps that you take. And you go down that bar, because you can't just come up to someone and say, hey, how about this? Now what are you going to do with it? They're like, whoa, who did you talk to? Who did you contact? Like, um, I need to know like what information you got from them that you can Like I need to know like what information you got from them that you can potentially enlighten me with. So it's just like the fact that she was like the general, so the information I was trying to get from her was the same information I was getting from local food distributors, fast food restaurants. Do we have spreadsheets on the amount of food waste if we even have any at all? That's all I need you to answer. And she just couldn't answer because she, she was leaving her office and it was something like that. But she was like pretty short with me and I understand it. I, I kept it professional, but it was just like, I went and I still try to reach out to her after that. Like I felt a little embarrassed because like it's my first time doing this, all anything like this. And she still didn't want to help, but it was okay because like I still reached out to Alicia Williams because she's, she'd probably like be better in that field anyway, but I just was trying to get like more data.
Okay, and there are rules and regulations surrounding the food service, right?
Yeah.
And you did right, trying to get legal to talk with you. But I am on the committee for our district wellness, wellness committee, okay? And when we have our meeting, I'm gonna talk with Joanne, Joanna and maybe get you to come in and to talk about that, okay? And maybe you can get some inroads, you know, with that.
Yeah.
Okay, about how we can assist in this initiative.
Yeah. I just like, I wanted to get like both perspectives, like on each side. Like what is like for the people who are experiencing this like tight situation as far as like not having enough food? And putting myself in that mindset, like how much more conscious I would be in like wasting food or just eating food or buying food or, or making it. And then I put myself on the side where like I am the person who's consuming. And it, it gave me like a lot of like perspective on it. And it just like, I, I know that like there's, there's just, it's a lot of like red tape. But I'm, I'm willing to like, just teach myself. I'm, I'm willing to be enlightened a bit about things that I'm not normally in touch with. And I, I know that like the legality is like something I definitely don't know anything about, which is a big part of this issue because it's food. So that's, I feel like that's what I mean.
Anything I can do, I like unraveling with red tape. But anything that we can do, and I will talk with Joanna, okay? And give you guys the information that I have that could help you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Leguizamo and then Mr. McBride?
So once again, thank you for coming up here and doing the presentation. You were my last booth that, that one day. So, and we were really, you know, at the end of it. So it was really exciting to see the whole presentation. So thanks again. But just talking to our, our board members on the wellness committee, because I talked about this a few years ago where, you know, once again, food waste, right? We talked about if we can get a program together to either put, put a space where we could have the food, the extra food and maybe give it to our extracurricular activities at the end of the school or just even for anybody to pass by and get it. And so I asked for the wellness committee at that time to take a look at what was, what was the barriers? Is it legislative? Is it policy? What is it, right? Because when we were talking about doing a policy or resolution to our legislators, that's where I think where we need to start doing those kinds of changes and advocating for those kinds of updates legislatively and policy wise. So that, that's just something I'd like to give to my committee member, board members as a, hopefully a takeaway that you can take back to the team. So I appreciate that and thank you for it, President.
Thank you. Mr. McBride?
I just want to say to you, young lady, I hear you loud and clear. And the reason I hear you loud and clear, in my church, I'm over the benevolence program. And that's what we do is feed every Saturday. And we feed people coming in and out of the community. And a lot of times we get food from the food bank and we struggle doing that. But as Ms. Hannah said, probably unravel, unravel the red tape. Well, there's a will, there's a way to do anything that you're trying to do. And the district can help you with your idea as far as distributing food to, out into the communities. Some of these food banks that's feeding these, feeding people every weekend at various different churches and various, and various different food banks. So I'd like to talk to you myself and share some ideas with you, how you can get around the red tape and where I, I think that our board as well as our legal staff would, something I'm going to share with you that cannot refuse because I, I hear you loud and clear and I would like to share with you my ideas as opposed to what you can do to try to achieve what you're trying to solve right now in terms of wasting food. So when you get a chance, I'd like to give you my number and go forward with you and talk to you about it and just share the ideas with you and then you can, once I give you the ideas, then you can take it and run with it. Because you on track with something, sweetie.
Yeah. Trying to give you the final comment?
Okay, go ahead. So yeah, we'll finish, complete student board member time.
Hello? Oh, wait, yeah. Okay, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to quickly mention that today, many Hispanics celebrate Mother's Day. So quería decir Feliz Dia de las Madres a las que están mirando en vivo, que están aquí en persona. Yeah. And then I wanted to move on to my GROTC presentation. I will be talking about the Raiders Club. There we go. So this is Waukegan Raiders. The sponsor is Allison Johnson, known as Turbo. He loves being called Turbo. These are a couple of pictures from a competition we went to in Indiana. It was really fun. It actually rained on us really heavy, but it made it more fun. And so I wanted to talk about, how would you describe Raiders? Raiders is one of the clubs within GROTC that involves excessive physical training. It's not just physical training, but in Raiders, you practice together creating team bonds. And I feel that what they do is like really, it's really nice because you create those like relationships within those clubs. And whenever there's someone like giving up while you guys are exercising, like your whole team is there cheering you on. They have your back. But not only is it physical, it also molds you to be mentally fortified. And Raiders extends beyond the physicality of it and goes into many aspects of the group as a whole and the individuals themselves. Some Raider competitions, the GROTC funds these competitions actually. And I think that's like, that's also good that what the GROTC program does. And some different clubs, they also fund them. As of now, I know that by next year Raiders will attend three competitions in Indiana. One in Georgia, Minnesota, Illinois, and the final one in Daytona Beach, Florida. As a younger child, I've always wanted to like travel. I always liked the idea of traveling and GROTC gives us those opportunities and experiences that we wouldn't get from like a regular gym class. So by saying that, the AOC would be a great start to create the influx of new cadets back into the program since we are now half the size since 2018. But we are on track to grow exponentially. We are currently in a smaller classroom with a rifle range in the basement. This is not only, this is not enough space to hold all the equipment for clubs. And whenever we have events or any meetings, we are using whatever we can to make it work or make it even feel more organized. In my opinion, having the AOC building would be a benefit for us greatly. And we can continue to teach and learn discipline and leadership skills, which I think is something very important for the community. That is all for my presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our student board member, you always do an amazing job in talking about that program and the benefits that our student support plan would help with growing the GROTC program. I appreciate that perspective. We have our consent agenda, which are only two things. It's approval for payment of our annual fire alarm inspection services. The information is there and presented and the approval of purchase of new playground equipment at Little Four Elementary School. Motion by Ms. Wasniak?
Second.
By Ms. Gonzalez. Any comments or questions on the motion? All right. So then.
Clarity, actually.
Then. It's okay. So what I want to do is, we're drawing this only two items, so we're gonna take them separately. 11A approval of payment for annual fire alarm inspection services for 2021, 2022.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education authorize the payment for annual fire alarm inspection services by, provided by Contech Fire Alarm Services Incorporated in the amount of $31,995.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the item as, as received, recommended.
Motion by Ms. Hannah, second by Ms. Leguizamo. Any comments or questions on the motion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Leguizamo.
This question would be from Mr. Moulton. Or Mr. Alzachus? Oh, okay. I saw you get up. I was like, okay, if you want to. So I know that I had already sent over my questions as it related, as it relates to this. But I really just need to fully understand if you can give me the role that Waukegan Fire Department plays in our annual fire alarm inspection services. And I'm specifically looking for Waukegan Fire Department.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Ms. Leguizamo. So our Waukegan Fire Department does, they do know our buildings. But as far as the actual devices and equipment for the inspection services, that's performed by electrical contractors that have a specific license in those items. So they're looking at the addressable panels, the devices throughout the building, the circuitry. They need to make sure that all the devices work. They report to the panel that reports to the call center in downtown Waukegan. The fire department, they are responsible to fill those calls and react in the event of an emergency. Our Illinois State Fire Marshal, as well as the Regional Office of Education, when they come through and they do their annual inspections in the fall, they're verifying that the district has done its inspection with the electrical contractor. So the Waukegan Fire Department, and again, this, these are individuals who are in our buildings for several hours, multiple days, anywhere from one week to two weeks. This would be a big lift for our Waukegan Fire Department. But again, we do this through an alarm company because our fire department at times does not have the capacity nor is that their role within the grand scheme of the inspection services. And we have had this discussion with them in the past, which is why we brought to the board these electrical contracted services that have a license specifically for fire alarm devices and equipment.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Moulton. Because the original concern around this for me was, as we know, school code allows for our local fire departments to do the fire alarm inspection services, right? And so what I'm looking to do is to try to keep money within our community. And that is the real reason why I'm bringing this up and what my major concern is on this. And I mean, I understand for several years, we've been doing this. We've been contracting outside. But I was trying to see about how is it that we can go on ahead and include our Waukegan Fire Department into some of these monies? Because you know, they also need some of this funneling of, of the money, monies as well. But they're also experts in some of this and I also want them to be experts in our buildings. So that's why I really wanted to understand their relationship as, as it goes into like the inspection services in our buildings. So I, I know there's other questions here.
Ms. Wasniak?
This inspection is different than the fire extinguisher inspection, right? That's a whole nother category.
Yeah, our fire extinguisher inspection, as well as our ancil system, which are the fire suppression systems in our cafeterias, is a different inspection. And I, and I do want to just tell the board to follow up on Ms. Leguizamo's concern. We do have a relationship with our fire department. We have addressable fire alarm panels, which means that when the call center and dispatch is contacted by our system, they know specifically Waukegan High School, Brookside Campus, West 132. They don't have to go searching for it, but we do have a relationship with them. But when we have the electrical contractor on site performing these inspections, exchange, replacing devices, checking the electrical circuitry of our systems, they are there several days for all day. Sometimes double shifts. In the past, we've tried to cram them all in spring break and we had to do double shifts. The Waukegan Fire Department, the firefighters and paramedics on staff, they would have to assign individuals in our buildings all day to perform these services. And we've experienced some challenges with that in the past. Not that they don't want to assist us. It's a manpower issue and we do have the inspection contractor to assist us with this because it's a very specific expertise, which is why they have a very specific license. But we do have that relationship with our fire department. I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you for that.
Ms. Hannah?
Yeah, Mr. Moulton, what happened to the, the company that was doing our inspections for, for our fire extinguishers and, I'm gonna say fire extinguishers? Or are they still the same?
They are still the same. I believe you're referring to Fox Valley. They are still the same. They also do training, the fire extinguishers for our operation staff.
Thank you. So we got a motion, a second. If there are no other questions or comments, roll call, vote please.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan Wasniak?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
President Ewing?
Yes, item approved. Motion carries. Next item is 11B approval for the purchase of a new playground at Little Four Elementary School.
It is the recommendation of the administration to authorize the superintendent to sign a contract with Team Row to furnish and install a new playground at Little Four Elementary School.
Mr. Riddle, I saw move that we approved the motion as read by the superintendent.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the action?
Looks like a nice playground. Really cool. Wish I was a kid again.
Yeah. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan Wasniak?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
President Ewing?
Yes. And again, I want to show, you know, there were a lot of purchases last week related to playground equipment. And there were some in this one as well, as we're looking at, how do we make sure that our buildings are safe and secure and that we have fun areas for our kids? So, and are accessible to the community after hours too. You know, there's a park across the street from my house. We go to the school to play. Next up, purchases and contracts. I'm gonna ask if we can take items A and B together? Ms. Hannah, will you make that motion for me?
I, I motion.
I make a motion.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Hannah.
I make the motion that we, that we approve items A, 12A and 12B for our purchase of vehicle for Crisis Intervention and Safety Department and to purchase two for transit vans for the Child Nutrition Department.
Awesome. So we got the motion to take items A and B together. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any comments or questions on the motion?
Yes. No, you go.
A quick question in regards to item eight. Is this going to replace another vehicle or is this an addition? And I'm sorry, Mr. Moulton.
Mr. Moulton? The question for A is, is this going to replace an existing vehicle or be it an add-on? Is that correct, Mrs. Leguizamo?
Yes. So I believe this is the safety, crisis intervention and safety vehicle.
Yes.
This is going to be an add-on. We do have in the agenda item this evening, a recommendation to approve an educational safety specialist. This would be for our Director of Crisis and Intervention and Safety to use this vehicle. And his vehicle will go to the ESS position that is on board access evening.
Thank you for clarification.
Go ahead, Ms. Hannah.
Are they also going to, are they going to be included in the, what, what, the GPS?
Yes.
The GPS?
Yes, ma'am.
It's gonna be input in to all, both? It's gonna be in, put in to all, both, all three or all four of them?
Sure, three.
Should be three, it will be included on all three.
Yeah, yeah. And we are not going to, um, we're, we're going to have, um, a secure place for these vehicles so that we don't, um, have to worry about, um, worry about catalytic converters being taken off the vehicles.
So that is the goal, Ms. Hannah. Uh, Mr. Wilson is here, so his office is at Lincoln Center, it would be parked here. Uh, the best we can do as far as a secure location is it's next to a exterior surveillance camera, and that way we can identify individuals if there is any vandalism to the vehicle in off-hours. So yes. Okay.
Thank you. If there, Mr. Riddle?
I'll just ask a quick question on the, uh, transit vans for the nutrition program. These are not replacing any vehicles, these are just, we haven't had refrigerated transit vans before for our nutrition program, is that correct? So they're just new vehicles? In fact, one of them I noticed is 70,000 and the other one is only about 16,000, uh, less, but it's a used vehicle with 65,000 miles on it. Um, that's, that seems like a, quite an expensive price to pay for a used vehicle that's, you know, with 65,000 miles on it, but I suppose possibly these are maybe hard-to-get vehicles or something in that condition? I'm not sure.
And used cars are expensive.
Yeah, I guess used cars are pretty, pretty expensive now compared to new ones, and so there's not much of a difference between these two prices. One is a 2017 and one is a 2022 vehicle, brand new.
Yes, Mr. Riddle, um, this, currently we do not have vans like this in the child nutrition department, so this would be a first to help assist with that program. The used car market, you know, we're, we're seeing prices a minimum of 20% higher than what we saw prior to the pandemic. Um, so, so that's what we're seeing across the board. We're also seeing delays in acquiring used vehicles, which is one of the reasons why we're bringing this forward today as opposed to three or four months ago.
Yeah, how, you say it's going to assist the child nutrition, and what, what function is it going to, um, what, what is it? I, I mean, how is it going to help?
So what we discovered over the pandemic is that we ordered a lot of food and we had nowhere to store it because our freezers were so packed that we couldn't store it. So we end up, we had to rent rider vans to house our food. So this is just a, a more economical way to have our own vehicles where we can put our food in there, store them hot or cold.
So that's actually perfect for what the student just mentioned regarding food waste because these could be used to transport them for some of the places if we would want to donate the foods, if possible. I know the red tape is kind of the issue, but.
If it, if we're buying, we're buying the, um, these transit vans for storage?
And transportation, so we are transporting food. Over, um, for transporting food. Over the summer, we had to go from school to school to school, so it's a transport meals from school to school to school, and then next, next school year we're going to open up after-school meals, so we don't need a driver and a vehicle for that. After-school means after-school Saturday.
Yeah, I, I understand, but what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, if we're using these, um, I understand for transportation, but we have enough, um, we have enough, um, district buildings where we would be able to maybe purchase, um, a refrigerated, um, something to go inside a building. Wait, before I see people shaking their heads, we, we, we own the armory, okay? And why couldn't we have storage, cold storage over there? Okay? Um, we have, um, we, we have, um, our warehouse up on, uh, off Gulf Road. Okay? We have, um, we have storage, um, maybe at, uh, Washington Campus. My whole point is that we shouldn't be using vehicles to store, um, to store food. Now, transportation, got that, but we need to get a little bit more creative in terms of food products that people have to consume. Children have to consume.
So, Ms. Hannah, if I could respond, you bring up some valid points, and we did discuss additional options. Currently, the schools, some of the schools have walk-in refrigeration or freezers, 10 by 10, 12 by 12 spaces. Ms. Williams has expressed that a lot of those locations were filled to capacity. We have the warehouse that is filled to capacity with supplies and materials for schools as well as PPE and other items. The Crisis and Safety Department has items stored there that they don't use every day, but they use them when they need them in the case of an emergency. The Glen Flora Armory, the district has done an excellent job recently clearing space out to ensure resources are pushed to schools, or, as Dr. Cuevas mentioned in a previous meeting, items are disposed of properly, such as our district copiers that we were storing there. So as opposed to build a walk-in refrigerator or freezer, which is another space consideration at our schools, where space is at a premium at this point, when we do need storage, we have these vans available, which is not every day, but it is as needed. But we also have transportation considerations. We've expanded summer school programming, we've expanded summer meal options, and we also are looking to expand as an initiative of the child nutrition department, after-school snack and meal service programs that will make these meals readily available if they're in vans, and will also allow us the flexibility to where we don't have to rent space or rent space, I'm sorry, have to rent vans or rent space at a third-party site to store these items. We want to make sure we don't run out of food. That's, that's a big consideration for us, and we need the flexibility to, that these vans will allow us for our food service program.
Right, right. Okay, um, maybe I don't understand what kind of trucks that you're talking about? That, you say vans, vans or trucks?
Can you click on the attachment, Mr. White?
Yeah, the attachment has a. So these would be refrigerated vehicles that are not your typical, if I said vans, I didn't want to confuse, they're not your typical vehicles. They're very large capacity, like the rider, rider trucks that you see, um, that, that really move items up and down the road.
So, Ms. Hannah, I guess the question, um, that we have, or what I want to capture is because I believe you support buying the trucks, but you want them to look at if you have a storage issue, can you do, find additional storage at the building?
Yeah, we have, we have the big armory over there.
So I think the armory question, uh, and we talked about it previously, related to what is going to be our long-term use of the armory, the board, just like we did with Lincoln Center, is we haven't done big upgrades, but I want to capture that. So if there's a storage issue or need, Ms. Hannah is asking us to look and see if we need to purchase any walk-in freezers in order to accommodate, can we do that? But you do support buying these trucks for transportation.
Okay, but you're right, I, I thought that there was a picture.
I thought so too. It's not, no, it's just a van, it's a van, it's a refrigerated van.
Certainly you can't store stuff very long in a refrigerated van. You're gonna run a gasoline engine 24/7, but, but as far as transportation, I certainly support this if we need it.
Right, because that makes no sense, that, because.
Right, so that's why I want it.
If it's a refrigerated van, it's all, it has to always stay.
Cold.
Cold, and in order for it to be cold, the engine has to be going. So that makes no sense, not when you got gas, almost $6, uh, uh, just about, $6 a gallon.
So what Ms. Hannah is saying is that she wants to use it for storage, but with, I mean, not for storage, she does not want to use it for storage, and I think that's not what you guys are saying for long-term storage use, but that she was supportive for transportation. Is that the correct takeaway, Ms. Hannah?
Yeah, but transportation is for the food, right?
Right, yes, refrigerated truck.
Don't get us wrong, we don't want these to be permanent storage as well, but if we need temporary storage in a pinch, or we need to make sure food stays at a certain temperature when it goes building to building, these vehicles will assist with that.
And what Ms. Hannah is saying is if you need additional storage, can you look at, if there is a need because we're built at capacity, to look and see if there are any other spaces if we need the refrigeration, right? And so that's my takeaway.
Yeah, that's 71, I guess we're gonna use the kids' extra money to buy that, too.
Well, I guess with this one, I don't, we're talking about food and, food insecurity and being able to move stuff, and to your point, is you want it to be the correct temperature because you don't want anybody to get sick. So I support it as, as, it's a very easy thing for me to do. I want to capture the point that you're saying, is Ms. Hannah's concern is she doesn't want this to be a permanent solution. So, um, I believe that that has been captured, and if we are ready to support it, um, I would ask for the vote.
And, 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 and this is the wrong time to buy any type of vehicle. And the report just came out, uh, yesterday, I was listening to. If we have to buy, we need to wait at least another six months, uh, when the, um, when the car prices are, uh, projected to go down.
So can I ask a question and comment? Thank you, Ms. Hannah, I agree. Like, car prices right now, used or new, are really ridiculous.
Ridiculous.
But I, I just wanted to make a comment because I, um, the student's presentation, um, was really, really awesome. You actually weren't the only students who had concerns about food, um, during that showcase, a lot of students had the same, um, same concerns. But I, I want to relate it to this because I think my, why I'm for something like this is because I, I don't want our food to be stored for really long periods of time because I think that actually impacts the quality of food for the students, um, when, when it's defrosting and when it's cooked and all that stuff. Obviously, I know that serving so many students to begin with is really difficult for the team, um, but can you talk about, if we don't do this, um, to, to help transport food that's needed between buildings and to help some of our programming, what would be the implications? Because I think that's what would help kind of beef the support for, for something like this, because I think it would be helpful to, to have a transportation device for the, for the foods.
Sure. So if we don't take action on this, um, and these vehicles are in high demand, we've been waiting on these, if we don't take action, we're going to miss out on the opportunity. But we would just continue to rent rider trucks. Uh, Ms. Williams also has a pod for items that don't need to be refrigerated, this could assist with that as well. So we would just continue to rent if the board chooses not to take action this evening.
I know, but I, I get that, but $71,000 for a van?
That's how much vans cost.
$65,000 for a van, yeah, right now?
No, I mean, again, I don't want to get into that argument, Ms. Hannah, I'm in finance, I finance vans, so I don't, I, I'm just saying, is we wait six months, we wait a year, as housing is everything, things are more expensive after the pandemic. We need it. Do we need it?
Uh, uh, Ms. Williams, uh, you, I don't think this was LeBaron's idea, nobody, you been, you, you take care of the food, right? What brought you to this conclusion? That's what I want to know. I want to take nothing away from you. What, what made some had to, you must have been doing something that caused you to say, come up with this idea?
So during the pandemic, we ran into storage issues. We had to rent rider trucks in order to store the food. We had rider trucks posted at Brookside to house boxes, because remember, we gave out the five packs, and that's my intention's next, next school year, to continue that program again. So those boxes were in a refrigerated truck because they have to be at a man, maintained our current temperature in order for us to distribute them. So they're not going to be sitting, we're going to be transporting them from building to building, or if we're posted up somewhere, we're going to be passing them out. They're not going to sit for days because food does have expiration date. So we will be distributing the food. And so the struggles we saw over the last two years, I, I wanted to make a change, make a difference.
And so.
Ms. Paul can speak on.
The program that the district is a part of, we cannot make profits off of that. And so, uh, every two to three years, we're audited to make sure that we're expending all of the monies that we're getting from food service reimbursements. So these would not be ESER funds, but rather it would be funded by food service reimbursement monies.
I, I thank you, I'm glad to hear that because, uh, I do know that, um, that food service, uh, does get funds. And is, y'all want to, y'all want to spend y'all funds on two vans?
Yes, it has to be to support food service. In addition to this request, we've also replaced tables in several of the schools, and that was due to reimbursement for food service.
I understand. We still need to think about. We still need to think about getting a, um, a, a cooler, a walk-in cooler that, um, I, I know one is over at, uh, Webster, I know that, but we need, uh, you know, and we have the space, we've got a building.
So currently, we do have walk-in, um, freezers that we've serviced over the years, so we've, we have, we have no space. I mean, high school has boxes, middle school can only hold so much, the elementary don't have freezers for us to hold food. So in order to increase our program, I need to be able to put food somewhere.
Right. We got.
So, so how much?
Down the street.
So, so how much was you paying those, the trucks that you were saying that you were using over the previous, how much, how much, what was the rent on those?
I'm not sure I'm still paying them, but gas is a fortune, so I have to pay gas insurance and the vehicle, so over two years, I mean, we put a bottle vehicle on them, it's just more expensive than having a own vehicle.
So, Mrs. Williams, if I hear you correctly, you said you're still planning on trying to feed next year, right? That same program, right? And that's why we need these vans, so we continue our food program to the extent, not, maybe not to the extent we did it this year, but in the, um, plan that you have for the following school year, right, for our community, right? So that's why the vans are needed. Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Right, I think we should support this because, you know, we, we, food is a very vital thing, you know, and the district's got some money for it right now, and, uh, I think that the, the department has, has researched this, and I think we're gonna save some money by buying these vans now.
I agree. Ms. Williams, um, took careful considerations, and I think diluting the food program wouldn't be the best idea right now.
We're not gonna dilute the program. We, but I, 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 well, get your vans, I most support getting your vans.
We transported a lot of food last year in, in school buses.
Well, we got a motion, we got a second, um, we got questions answered. Roll call vote.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Wozniak?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
President Ewing?
Yes. Item approved, motion carries. Um, I know that we had agreed to hold item C over.
Yes, yeah.
Item D is the renewal of Asian Human Services for 2022, 2023.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to approve the agreement with Asian Human Services for the 22, 23 school year in the amount of $424,630.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Leguizamo, second was Mr. Riddle. Any comments or questions on the motion?
I have comments.
Hold, hold both of them over until we get more, more data showing the effectiveness of what they're doing with our students.
So the data was attached, I'm going to ask Ms. A Gonzalez to make the comment, and then, um, I may support, uh, the motion to hold over if it's not, uh, urgent. Go ahead, Ms. A.
Okay, um, I, uh, I mean, we had already talked about it, I had mentioned it to the board president, and, um, you know, we, we obviously have heard a lot of, um, community concerns regarding some of these programs with BAM and WOW and Asian Human Services, and our whole thing, you know, I, I personally can attest to the success of some of the programming. I, I went to some sessions for BAM and WOW, and I thought that they were really impactful for the students who participate. A lot of the teachers that I know who have students in those programs, um, actually get really positive feedback from it. Um, I'm not too sure about the anecdotes about Asian Human Services, but I think the more support that we have in the schools for our tier-two students is really important. But again, I, I think it's important to think about what internally we're doing to increase capacity for our SEL support teams in the schools. Um, and, you know, just to share with, with the rest of our board, um, I had met with some social workers, um, this past week, and, you know, they kept. And, you know, they kept saying things that I had already known and we all have heard before, is that we need more staff. We need more staff. And we need to create procedures between different departments of teams so that we all are on the same page about how we interact and support students. And so, you know, if we are integrating these folks, I want it to be a wholehearted effort. But I also feel like we haven't really had an update on, you know, increasing staff for the people who are in our buildings and who are, you know, part of our district team.
I would support that as well. One of the things is we brought these in supplemental supports. And what we've also stressed is the ability to make sure we're building our internal capacity as well. And so as we look at the budget and what we're doing with the budget and budget document, we have to make sure that in addition to these, we're also putting monies aside to build that capacity. And the superintendent is aware of, you know, a lot of the information and how as a district, we've stated our goal of supporting our students' social emotional needs. We heard during public comment from other students and even from our own experiences that that may not be happening to the level that we want it to. And so while I have no issues with these, I am going to ask if we can hold it over for student achievement. It's already nine o'clock. And just so we can discuss.
There's no problem holding this over. I do want to state though, when we state that we need more social workers and we need to provide supplemental services for our families, then we have to look at all avenues. And as we know, Asian Human Services gives counseling services to the whole family, does it in the evening, does it on the weekend. So, and we also have a contract with them that states that their first priority is to hire locally. And so keeping that in mind, and we will come back with this, holding this over will not affect. I don't believe will affect anything. We'll hold it over to when we bring forward BAM and WOW.
Thank you.
And so.
Motion rescinded, and we have a... Do you rescind your second, Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Another thing I would say though, if I could just add on this. One of the reasons I support this is because we're using SIR three monies, and we're not committed to an employee that we have to keep on. This is an agency that already knows. They've been working in our district. They already know what they're doing. They have a plan. And it's not like hiring our own employee and training them. And then we're committed to that money, that person, when the SIR money goes away. This is a contract service, so.
I just want to say, that's good, but I think the main question is, are they effective? And I think that's the issue right now. And I heard my fellow board member say that she went in all of the buildings and she pretty much did a survey as opposed to what they doing and what they're not supposed to do and how effective they are. And I've done the same thing. I've been at several schools just to listen to BAM. But as far as the Asian, which is deal with our girls, correct?
No, no, no.
WOW.
WOW. Well, I don't know anything about WOW. And I really didn't follow up with WOW because I'm not being a showman this, but that's my expertise when it comes to girls. But with our boys, I'm a boy and I know what boys need. So I went to BAM. And what I seen BAM do with our boys, I thought was excellent. And I said, I went to more than one session just to see. And their program is like we talk curriculum. It's the same curriculum that they use in all our buildings. Their counselor, they're following the same recipe. And the recipe that they're using to bring our boys from a young man to a man, I thought it was, what I heard was great.
Mr. McBride, is that at the high school level?
I went to, I went to Juarez. I went to Brookside.
Okay. Because what I'm hearing from students, many of them don't even know who BAM and WOW is.
Well, let me say this. Let me say this. Now, when I said in the sessions now...
Those are the kids that need to be...
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say.
Those are the kids that need to be having the services. The ones that I talked to.
Right. But let me say this. I hear what you're saying. Because when I said in the sessions, I was looking at some of the kids that was in the sessions. Did they really have issues? The issues that we talk about were insubordination, substance abuse issues.
They didn't have that.
No, I didn't see that. But they did have students in there that still needed to help. Example, you had some autistic kids in there, which is a need. You also had some kids in there that was on the verge of committing suicide, which is a need.
Absolutely.
And you also had some kids in there had some substance abuse problems. So when I seen that, you know, all kids, irregardless in our district, need that support. So maybe what we need to look at is when they get ready to start selecting students, grab some of those students that we know that are really at risk. And so anyway, back to BAM again. I had an opportunity to get a snapshot of what they do. And at first, when they first started talking about it, I didn't approve it. But I've had an opportunity to see, and now I can believe.
Right. But can I just straighten the board out? I think we're talking about Asian Social Services. BAM and WOW has been pulled off the agenda. We're not voting on that tonight.
I also want to remind...
So don't they work with our grade school children?
I also want to remind the board, there is a national shortage on social workers. So we can apply twenty more positions. That does not mean you're going to find twenty more people. Through Asian Human Services, they're allowed to hire social workers outside of that, outside of the licensure to be a social worker, right? So they don't have to have those education classes as long as they work through Asian Human Services. And so just keep that in mind also. But we will hold this over along with BAM. We will come back with more information at our next student achievement meeting.
Well, can I add a final comment to that superintendent? I think, and I think it's important the community hear this because I think to Ms. Hannah's point about some of the students who didn't know about the programs is that unfortunately, because of the shortage, right? You can't reach every student. And I also think even internally with staff, it's hard for everyone to know how to communicate with one another. And so, you know, we're trying to supplement our SEL teams in the schools with these supports, but they don't hear about them or they don't know them. And I think that that was where, you know, there is an intersection that doesn't exist. And I feel like if that were improved or better communicated to our staff, they would feel more supported. Student wise, I think if each of our teams and some of our programs were fully staffed, we would reach more students. But there's such an increased need that, you know, we can't always service the students who need it.
And you're absolutely right, Mrs. Gonzalez. But Dr. Sisario did explain to the board, it's not a one-stop shop, right? We have to apply multiple avenues where students can get support. Asian Human Services, one. BAM and WOW is another one. Our social worker is another. I mean, so there needs to be multiple things. And as we've heard from BAM and WOW, there's this, I don't want to say a specific characteristic of a student that they will work with, right? Where Asian Human Services works with the families. So there needs to be a variety of services. It's not just one, right? And after the pandemic, in all of our schools and nationally, we see our kids are hurting more than ever, than ever. So SIR funds, that's exactly what that's directed for, to supply these supports directly to our students that are coming back with emotional trauma from the pandemic and support them in a variety of ways. So I will say it's just not one thing that's going to close that COVID slide. It's going to be a multitude of things, right? And so we have to keep that in mind as we move forward.
Yep. And I think my takeaway, and I'm sorry, Ms. Wozniak. I see your hand.
That's okay. I just wanted to remind everybody that while the student has to be recommended by a staff member to be part of the BAM and WOW program and Asian Human Services, they also have, the parents also have to buy it, and they also have to sign up for it. If they don't, we can't help those students.
Yep. And they have to show up.
Right, right.
Yep.
And so it's on the students and the families to participate.
Well, and Sisario, you're right. That's one of the problems that I, when I was setting the program, setting into some of the groups, some of the counselors, made it clear. And I understand it. Some of the kids that they were trying to reach that we're talking about didn't want to come. And you can't make them come. But on the other hand, there's always an antidote if we do what we need to do to figure out a way to get those kids that do have those kinds of dysfunctional behaviors, to get them involved. We got to work on that ourselves and get the right individuals in here to be able to reach them.
Yep. So my last and final comment on this, and then we can move forward since we're holding it over, is related to, and I agree, but I'll, you know, put it aside, is that we should be building internal staff. We should be partnering with external resources. But if the different individuals are not talking or communicating to one each other and our internal systems are not as strong or robust as they could be, kids fall through the cracks. We heard during public comment about a student who's struggling and that parent feeling like they haven't been offered any resources in order to assist. And so I think, again, as we talk about bringing in external partners, we also have to bring internal capacity. And I do want to remind the board and the administration about the superintendent's goals this year and that we were requesting to bring three, that's the other part of this that we're not talking about, three agencies and organizations from our own community in order to address some of these social emotional needs. It's because BAM is targeted. Each counselor only has, what, forty-two to forty-eight students? If I'm reading that correctly, and we'll get the correct number about what their program is supposed to do. But forty is the number. So forty times two, that's only eighty at Brookside. It's twenty-two, over two thousand kids in that building. BAM can't be the solution to everything. So how do we partner, just like the superintendent is saying, with our local community organizations in order to solve some of these problems? So I personally don't have an issue with BAM. I have some questions still that I want clarified, and I think the community or AHS, but I think the community deserves to hear the presentation, see the data, and the rationale for the recommendation. So.
Just a quick question. Can Infinite Campus house a section in there of SEL supports?
I can't answer that right now. I'll come back to the board with that. But I know what you're talking about. I do, we do have a program that can do that, but I'm not sure about Infinite Campus.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like that's a student resource and family resource for everyone. But I think that would be a nice little add-on if they had a section in there where they can list off their social emotional support, MTS, whatever that system may be. So just kind of put it out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, no problem. All right. So we are now at personnel, five, ten, twenty-two, thirteen A.
It is the recommendation that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation to approve the appointments and accept the resignations and retirements as found on schedules F nine seven eight, L nine two five, G six three six. Also approve the coaching positions for the twenty-two, twenty-three winter-spring season.
We have a motion? Do we have a motion? Motion by Ms. Leguizamo, second by Ms. Wozniak. Any comments or questions on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Wozniak? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes, and I really hate that we're steadily losing more teachers to resignations and retirements.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
President Yui?
Yes. Item approved. Motion carries.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bryant Rice, who previously served as a teacher at Carmen Buckner Elementary School. He will now serve as the Culture Climate Specialist with the starting salary of fifty-five thousand dollars. Congratulations, Mr. Rice. And Mr. Rice helped with our graduation policy committee.
The question was, a board member asked me, why did I come out of the classroom? And I just want to say that I love the classroom. I love being a teacher. But my personality is I can make a bigger impact by being a culture, climate and culture specialist, by engaging with all the classes in the school and providing more of my experience and the things that I did in the classroom, but at a bigger range. So.
He's staying with you?
Yes, he is.
Look, we not getting, nobody else going to get him.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, and congratulations.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Our next appointment is Mr. Sterling Hall, who previously served as a paraprofessional safety officer. He will now serve as the new education safety specialist with the starting salary of fifty-five thousand dollars. Congratulations, Mr. Hall.
He's not here. All right. So now we have sixteen A ratification of first processing of board bills for May twenty twenty-two, manual check request payments, and first Midwest insurance payments for the period of April twentieth, twenty twenty-two through May third, twenty twenty-two.
It is a recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education ratified the first processing of board bills for May twenty twenty-two, manual check request payments, and first Midwest insurance payments for the period of April twentieth, twenty twenty-three through May third, twenty twenty-two. The accounts payable to the board, April twentieth, twenty twenty-two through May third, twenty twenty-two. Payments total one million, seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. The manual checks request payment for the period of April twentieth, twenty twenty-two through May third, twenty twenty-two, total one million, one hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars and four cents. The first Midwest insurance payments for the period of April twentieth, twenty twenty-two through May third, twenty twenty, total zero dollars.
Mr. Riddle, I so moved that we accept the motion as read by the superintendent.
Motion by Mr. Riddle, second by Ms. Wozniak. Any comments or questions to the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Wozniak? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
President Yui?
Yes. Item approved. Motion carries. We are at committee reports. Are there any?
Just briefly, we're still, the HR Policy Review Committee is still working. We put some language that was going to be, that was going to be taken back to the, to legal and the superintendent. And then I guess we'll have a status on where we are with that policy. Mr. Riddle, you'll talk about the Wellness Committee.
Yes.
Okay. Then Mr. Riddle, talk about the Wellness Committee.
Okay. And I'm going to step out very briefly. So I'll turn the chair over to Mr. Riddle, who will continue with committee reports.
Okay, so there are other committee reports?
Yeah, I can report on the PTAC. Thank you, Vice President Riddle. So the PTAC, which is the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee, had met. And they've been working hard on the Parent and Student Handbook updates. There's a lot of updates that will be coming forward to the board. And I think we should be seeing that before the end of the school year, I think we're in June, I think is when we'll see it at the board level. So it does not include, does not include the equity policy updates yet. But as those are rolling around, that'll also be included at a more later date, and we'll see how that goes.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Leguizamo. Anyone else on the committee?
I won't report out on committee because there's old business that the board is supposed to review. And we should focus on that because that would help the student handbook situation.
Okay, great. Okay, that's it for committee reports? Okay, delegates report.
Just quickly, our joint conference is coming. You all should have gotten some type of information about it as well. You all should have gotten some type of, um, information about it as well as, um, our Q conference is coming and it is a very dynamite, um, conference to attend.
Excuse me, Ms. Hannah, could you speak into the mic so everyone can hear you?
Um, it was, it's, it's a good thing and so look, um, look forward to, um, yeah, those registrations. And we want to get on top of it with our housing so that we get, make sure that we are in the conference hotel.
Right.
Um, and, um, be able to make our plans, um, adequately and effectively. Delegate, delegate, that is something else. Oh, and I want to continue to encourage, uh, my, uh, board colleagues to, um, to look on those, um, look in, on ISB and check out the, um, the webinars, um, that are, that are there. You can even go into the archives and look at, um, webinars. And then also we have our meeting with, um, with our state, um, field rep tomorrow.
Right.
It's six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Okay, superintendent's report, item seven C.
At this time, I'm going to pass due to time.
Okay. Thank you, superintendent. Okay, we have, uh, item eighteen A and B are, are informational items. I don't think we have to take any action on those.
No.
Um, for old business, um, we have nineteen A, Board Policy Fifty-three oh one, Graduation Requirements, second reading. Um, did, did anyone want to discuss that?
Yes, I do. I, I, I have been, I have been, um, I have been talking. Yeah, I guess, I guess...
A motion?
We have to get a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Need a motion.
Okay, we need a motion first. Can I have a motion for nineteen A, that, uh, that's Board Policy Fifty-three oh one, Graduation Requirements?
Motion.
You have a motion? Okay, do we have a second? Got a motion from, from Ms. Leguizamo?
Wait, motion to discuss or what is the motion?
A, a motion to approve.
I am, I, I'm gonna ask to hold it over.
So, we, in order to have any discussion, we need a motion and a second. And that brings it up for discussion. And if we still decide that we want to hold it over, but I can't have the discussion without a motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Leguizamo, I have a second. Okay, Ms. Wozniak, okay, um, and we have to vote on that, right? No, we don't. Okay, so now we have to discuss it. Okay, Ms. Hannah, you can continue your discussion.
Okay, uh, one of the issues that, um, that I am concerned about is how that we have now made, um, made freshman seminar a part of the required credits for graduation. And what I am finding, um, now is that freshman seminar is becoming more of a hindrance for students, um, for students to satisfy that freshman seminar credit. But also, I've talked with educators and they're not quite understanding why it is, why it has to be a requirement. I can't get a, um, I can't get, uh, uh, a clear rationale as to what actually freshman seminar is and what does it, what is the purpose of it? But we have it in here in for, in order for our seniors to graduate freshman seminar. And I don't think, I think we need to take and remove that. If anything, you know, yeah, they, they have to, we can fix it in freshman year, okay? That they may have to, you know, they may have to take it if necessary. But we should not have freshman seminar as a required graduation, uh, credit. And, and what is the purpose of it? You know, that, that, what, what's, give me a clear rationale as to what is freshman seminar and what purpose and benefit does it serve for the students?
Thank you, Dr. Knott.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening, everyone. Um, freshman seminar serves a, a wide variety of purposes. We know freshman year is a very difficult time as students transition from middle school to high school. So the course, uh, is developed to assist students with executive functioning skills, how to organize themselves to, to, uh, be engaged in a full day of high school, study skills, um, ability, uh, teaching them how to do things like check their grades on a regular basis, how to communicate with teachers, how to, um, engage appropriately in, in common spaces like the cafeteria and the, you know, auditoriums and those kinds of things. Um, it's a great, it's a course that I've used previously when I was a, a high school principal years ago. And it was a huge, uh, had a huge impact on our students' ability to, again, to transition into high school. A couple of weeks ago, the board approved a partnership with the Network for College Success, if you guys remember. And that was a, an organization that's gonna come in out of the University of Chicago and is gonna provide, um, support to our freshman, um, leads, our freshman lead teachers, our freshman success team, and the principals. The freshman seminar class is instrumental for that partnership um, because it's, it's gonna allow those freshman leads to be able to have a better handle on the students that are in that class, be able to pop into those classes, potentially do some grade reflections, to do some social emotional, any kind of mental health activities that maybe need to be done as well. Um, so those part, that partnership with NCS goes hand in hand with that course. We said that that course would be instrumental in that partnership.
Yeah, and I can, oh, go ahead, Ms. Hannah.
Yeah, I, 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 I heard that. I respect what you said. But it's, uh, have you, have you talked with the, um, with, uh, the individuals in, that are administering or that have the freshman seminar classes? Is, uh, also, have you looked at the data to see how many fresh, how many seniors are having to go back and take freshman seminar? Because they didn't pass it when they were freshmen. So it doesn't make sense.
I know that was one of the things that the Graduation Policy Committee struggled with was, was the way it's currently structured is that it does require that.
Yeah, and we don't need that, we don't need freshman seminar to be a, a requirement for graduation.
Hundred percent, Ms. Hannah. I absolutely agree with you because the policy recommendation of the committee was that we, we hear Dr. Knott, SEL support, transition from middle school to high school, excellent, you know, only for freshmen though. So, so when we met in committee, when we heard that seniors were taking freshman seminar, we were like, wait, why? They've already finished high school. Why would they have to do the requirement to graduate? So, so our recommendation was that keep freshman seminar, um, keep it mandatory only for freshmen. But, uh, if, if they are trans, if, if we have transfer stu-, because it's also aff- affected our transfer students.
Yes.
If the students are transferring in, um, and are, you know, midway through second semester, freshman year or older, that they will not have to take the class. So, so that's our policy consideration for freshman seminar.
Right.
We love the class. A lot of the students, I think, more than eighty percent of the students pass it. Uh, the content is really geared toward first-year students. But if they're past, I don't know, uh, I think we said three weeks or five weeks into second semester freshman year, they shouldn't have to take that as a class to graduate because it's almost working backwards and that's not the point.
Absolutely.
So, so that's, i- if, if the board has a question about that, our, our recommendation was that, uh, it should, it should be a requirement, but only for first-years. And everyone else, um, gets waived out of that requirement, uh, after second semester freshman year.
And, and Ms. Gonzalez, is it a, is the committee also recommending that it's just pass fail? Do I have to get a?
Uh, yeah, that's how it is right now. It's pass fail.
But, but look on, uh, look on your thing here.
Right, that's the conversation, Ms. Hannah. So if we can get board consensus that we don't want to make freshman seminar required, I think that's, that's what, why we want to have this conversation with you. Right? That's, that's the point of this discussion.
Just to add on to that question, so for newcomers coming in like their sophomore year.
Mm-hmm.
They would not have to take it. Have to take this course, although it would be beneficial for them, um, if they're new to the country. They're newcomers versus, um, new to the district.
But we should have, where, where's our newcomers program?
Right.
We should have our, we should have a new, our newcomers program.
I think, um, I think those things are a little different, right, Ms. Leguizamo? Because when, when you talk about the content of the freshman seminar course, it's just geared toward high school. When you're thinking about incoming individuals from different countries, that's a whole other bag of situations, um, that, that, you know, you have to be culturally competent in addressing. Um, so, so that's not this policy, but I, I, I agree, we have to have a newcomers program because we're seeing more of those students.
Right, but we should, we, we, that was put in place a long time ago.
We do. Ms. Leguizamo's question was related specifically to this policy. If that would prevent someone from taking freshman seminar, so Ms. Gonzalez, I, I, and, and what I want to do is because of time, keep us focused on this policy. We do have a newcomers program. I want to state that very, very clearly. Uh, but what this, the question was related to this. Uh, Ms. Wozniak?
I'm a opponent for, uh, freshman seminar because there's a lot of things that freshmen don't understand and know about what courses they need to take to graduate, what they need to do in order to go to college, what, uh, if they want to be an athlete and get a scholarship, how to do, how to go that path. Um, I, and I understand most colleges have freshman seminar.
That they, that they require their incoming freshmen to, to take nowadays, that that's standard.
So, and I guess the question would be, Ms. Wozniak, not if they should have to take it as freshmen, but if they don't pass it, do they have to retake it?
I'm not, I'm not saying they have to pass it and take it. They, they just, I, they, they have to take it. They just don't have to.
There shouldn't be a credit recovery for it.
Right.
There doesn't need to be a credit recovery?
But I think it's very...
Um, I think that's what we had agreed on, right, Ms. Del Sanchez? You get one shot if, if you don't, um, if you don't absorb.
To graduate.
Right.
Right.
But you see, that, that also may even be a precursor as to, okay, is eighty percent of the popu-, freshman population passing it? Does that also lead into our freshman on-track data? Does that also lead into our graduation rates, right? And so, that, that could potentially even be a, a data set, which, um, I'm just kind of looking at that futuristically and what that, that could be because it's concerning that it's supposed to be like a, kind of like a PE class, right? An easy to pass kind of class. You can't, you know, it, it's kind of hard. But to see that students are still not passing it, you don't know the reasons why and if we found out the reasons why, um, for that twenty percent, I think that that right there is, is even alarming, right?
Would you say attendance?
Right, but we don't, we, we don't want to, that, that, I, I say that we need to get the, uh, get the data to see how many students passed it.
And they've done that, yeah.
Yeah. We have the numbers. I don't, I don't know.
Ms. Leguizamo brings up a good, great point, guys. This, this class is instrumental for our freshman on-track as well in, in supporting those efforts because again, students have the opportunity to check their grades regularly. Ms., um, uh, Wozniak also mentioned things they don't know.
Right.
So in the class, they're taught GPAs, they're taught credits, they're taught, you know, how, how those things are calculated and looked at, um, transcripts, those kinds of skills. Um, so all this work bleeds into that freshman on-track, which ultimately impacts graduation, which ultimately, you know, obviously positively impacts our district as well. So, um, the course is invaluable. I mean, I could go on and on about the, the value that the course provides. The, the logistics of graduation requirements and everything else, I mean, that's for the committee, of course, to, to discuss further. But the course in itself is, is, is powerful.
Dr. Knott, is it gonna cause a problem if it's, if it's just a pass fail and it's not a required class?
So I was wondering.
Say, I'm sorry, Mr. Riddle, I didn't hear your question.
Would it, would it cause a problem, do you think, on students, um, putting in the effort into the class if it's simply a pass fail and they, it's not a requirement for graduation?
The spirit of the class is to be an enrichment class for students to kind of hone and develop skills to help them be successful in high school. For students to fail the course, I think they would, we'd have to look at those factors that are contributing to that. It could be, as Mr. President Yuen mentioned, attendance-related, um, or other particular reasons. Well, I'm sorry, I think I missed your, the, the...
Well, I, it's simply, I was asking if it's, if it's simply a pass fail and it's not a required class for graduation, is that going to be a detriment to students putting the effort into the course that it needs in order to graduate?
Can I piggyback on that? So I think what, Mr. Riddle, not to move away from your cap, do they get credit for it when they get a pass?
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
But also, I just want to clarify, it, it is a requirement.
The freshman would, freshman seminar would be a requirement.
You, if you fail, you don't have to do the credit recovery. Uh, but it is a requirement if you're a freshman entering high school to, to be in the class. So they, they have to take it anyway.
Oh, I know they have to take it, but I'm saying, is it a requirement for graduation?
So what I'm hearing, I believe board consensus is...
Now it is.
It is.
What I believe board consensus is...
Shouldn't be.
What I believe board consensus is, is that it'd be a required course for freshmen, so it's a required course. But that, um, it not be a graduation requirement to pass.
Yes.
Alright.
Yes.
Done. Uh, we'll adjust. Now, the second one, um, you know, one of the concerns that I had and I heard from the committee, but I go back to, um, why not make our graduation requirements reflect that of the state of Illinois? Um, I continue to, and again, I know the state is going to continue to move those numbers up and I think we would adjust with those numbers. Um, I always go is that a minimum is not, uh, the maximum that you can do. But what I always fear is that by, um, setting a different barrier, right? Is we have some students who would meet it, but they may not receive their diploma, um, because whatever the district's, um, minimum is. So that was where I kind of came out on it with the credits. Is I think that our graduation credit should reflect whatever the state of Illinois's credits are.
I, I think that that is, oh, and this is just me, okay? Because we have, we have been working on, um, on twenty-two credits for, for a while. And it, it, you know, our students have, um, have, uh, uh, you know, made up, they went there. They, they were able to get those credits. And, you know, it wasn't, um, it, it, it wa-, it became, um, just a natural thing for the students to get those type, those credits. When the credits were, when they were put above the state minimum, it was because we wanted our students at, to have a higher expectation and not just to work for the, the minimum of, of that. And our children have always, our children have, have always, um, been able to, um, to, to take and get those credits. And, and there, there was no issue.
So it had, I mean, our graduation rate is, is, has been there. It's been that way for at least a decade.
Right.
According to the state report card, we haven't hit eighty, above eighty percent. So at least twenty percent of our students have, um, you know, that's been, an issue is like you said, is it being higher. Now, Ms. Hannah, like you say, if we lowered it, would that mean that the graduation rate would have went up substantially? I'm not saying that and a minimum doesn't mean that that's what you should aspire to. I believe that the board, your board, the board, and when I say your board, the board from previous that made, that made the requirement, um, be that you have to take a full course load, right? Means that students would graduate if they pass all their classes, right? When I first started high school, if you were a freshman and you only needed one class, you only had to take one class. We changed that into you had to take a full course load. Is that correct, Ms. Hannah, where you didn't get to do that? You wouldn't leave early.
You, you still had your, you still had your, your core classes and your elect.
Yes, and so you had to take a full case load, even if you didn't need the credits. And so now what I'm saying is if you take your full classes and you pass all your classes, you will exceed our minimum with the credit requirements. You will well exceed. I think it ends up being like twenty-four credits or something like that.
Right, and, and the kid, the students were doing that. Right, and, and the kid, the students were doing that. And so why are we messing with that?
Well, they weren't, I mean, if we got eighty percent.
No, that, that was during the pandemic, and if you look at the data during that time, when we changed that down. Um, to, uh, when we lowered them, there were many, many, many students. In our senior class that had made.
Right, Ms. Hannah, again, if you say nineteen and I do twenty-six, that doesn't stop somebody who had nineteen. But if I only have nineteen, that's what my stance is, so I'm not arguing with Ms. Hannah, I get the premise. What I'm saying is that by us setting the bar, that doesn't exclude anybody from exceeding the bar. Um, and again, I, I'll, I'll go, it was, it was a lot, I think it should be in line with the state. But where I fall on this issue, and if I don't have board concurrence, we move on, is that I believe our minimum, our requirements. Should reflect the state's minimum requirements to graduate as a, how can we?
And so only seventeen.
Then that's what it should be for the minimum.
That, that, that is so, I mean, what district is doing that?
Well, can, can I say, and then, and I, I want to definitely go back to what the committee recommended and what we sort of struggled with. Because I get Ms. Hannah's point, we don't want to, uh, have the minimum standards for students, right? Um, but I think where, where we're concerned equity wise is that. When you have students enter high school and from the get, right? Their first year students, and then they fail a class. They enter soft, or maybe even summer, if they start thinking about credit recovery or going to sophomore year. They now have to fit in their schedule. At least a, a, one period if they failed just one class or a couple periods, depending on how many classes they didn't do so well on. And do the credit recovery on top of their sophomore year course load. And so if you think about it, and, and this doesn't apply to the students who are just coasting, right? The students who are getting A, Bs, and Cs, and passing, and have good, decent relationships with teachers. These are the students who are like, I hate math, I don't want to be in class. I, you know, I don't like, uh, I don't have healthy relationships with my teachers, right? They, they start off poor, and then we hold them back, because they can't even recover the credits in time. And so what, what that lends itself to is that by the time they're a junior or senior. And we don't have classes that we can fit in their schedule, now they're taking virtual classes on top of their course load. They're, they're having to do multiple credit recovery, uh, alternatives to the course load that we expect them to graduate with. And I think to, um, President Ewing's point, and I think some of, uh, the committee members' points is that. We, um, it's, it's absolutely our goal for the students to learn as much as they can. But if we're not trying to help our most vulnerable students at least do the credit recovery with the courses that they need. Then they're not going to graduate in four years, that's just impossible mathematically for them to do. And, and, you know, to even bring it back to our whole district, we know a lot of our students are going through. Elementary and middle school not being at grade level reading. To expect them to take multiple, uh, literature and social studies courses and electives. On top of what is, is be requiring, which is just the sixteen, are we really servicing them? If they don't know how to, if they are not grade level ready and we're expecting them to take more courses than is required by the, by the state for them. I think it, it, it puts them in a bind, if that makes sense.
Yes, and, and ma- and, um, I, I'm going to, I'm going to recite as much as I can. Something that I was, that I've been looking into. Um, when, when we, um, get ninth grade students from the middle school. We usually come in around twelve hundred, uh, students. Um, going, coming into our ninth grade, okay? We forget though, just what you just said. They're coming in and they're just, they're reading on a fifth and sixth grade level.
Right.
And so, by the time, they, the, the, the reading levels, reading levels very, very important. For them to do anything.
Right, right.
And see, and we're, we're trying to fix something at, in, in high school. When it kind of needs to be fixed. At elementary and middle school. Okay, but anyway, um, by the time that our, that ninth grade cohort. Of twelve, of twelve hundred becomes seniors. We've already lost about, um, about two hundred students.
Yes, wow.
Okay, and the, um, the, the, um. It's a system structure failure.
Yes.
How we have got things structured.
Right.
Right now, and because as of, um, today. Our graduation numbers, and we still got, we still have a few more days to add a few more on. We're at five hundred and fifty graduates. Okay? And that brings me, um, that brings me to the, um. Uh, going back to the freshman seminar, cause that, that's a big part of that. And also making, um, getting our eight hundred and seventy-five. Senior students, cause that's the entire class. And, um, if we're going to get even close to that right now. That means that we're going to be jamming students on the computers. To do all of that credit recovery, just to get the credits. That is not substantive educational value. Not, not by doing that, and we should not do, be doing that.
So.
To, just to get the credit so that they can graduate.
Right.
Okay, because it, 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 what is it going to do for them in their future?
Right.
Okay, they, they, look, they still can't read.
Right, so Ms. Hannah, I'm, I'm confused, are you, so, so you don't want us to reduce the credits, or you do?
I want us to value our students and value our teachers that we have. Um, teaching our kids, okay, listen what I'm saying to you, so I can put this together. There was a purpose, a reason, cause the, when I graduated high school. We only had the state, had to have the state minimum. Okay? Um, in retrospect, if I had to work for twenty-three, twenty-four, I'd have did that, okay? But, we, we, reason, it, and it was like that forever, eighteen credits, okay? And we, we, um, I'm under, under, uh, Dr. Batiste. We raised them. Because, and he was a, he was staunch educational person. He wanted our students to have a higher expectation. Than what the state had for the students. And I'm going to tell you, you guys need to check. How many school districts actually go with the state's standards? It's not that many.
No.
I've already checked.
Yep, and I would agree, I think that's a, a fair.
Because they wanted, they want their children and their students to go above that minimal standard. Our children are bigger than minimal.
And, and that's why I don't want the conversation to be that we are getting our students to aim for the minimum. I graduated with, I think, twenty-six and a half or twenty-seven credits, right? And nothing in us changing the policy stops that, right? What it does is, in, it doesn't do that, because if you're taking a full course load and you pass all of those classes. You will exceed the minimum. What I do want to, um, just remind the board, and, and we might just, we might have to have a workshop on this. Cause we're not going to get through it. Is, is, what, what, what I do want to remind the board is simply, um, sometimes we have students that are dual enrolled in CLC. By reducing the credit, uh, the number of credits, it gives more opportunities and pathways for them to do other things. Um, because I do.
But that, um, what's the percentage though, that's not a lot of the kids.
But it should be, that's kind of the point, is that it should be. We should have our students graduating with college credits, because while we talk about, and we've talked about it, I don't want to belabor the point, and we talk about equity. Is we have students who are based on the test, told that they are not college ready.
Right.
So you make them take a remedial course, but then you take those same kids, study after study. You show that they're not college ready, based on whatever that arbitrary test is. You put them in a college classroom without having to take a remedial test, and guess what those students do? They perform at college level. And so what we want to do is eliminate our students from having to take those remedial courses based on the test. If you have college credits, that will save money. Until we abolish student debt in this country, it helps black and brown students graduate college. And so creating more CTE opportunities, creating more dual enrollment opportunities, I think is important. So it is getting late, and I, I do, Ms. Hannah, I a hundred percent value what you're saying, and I want that to be clear. It's, it's not setting a standard and saying all our students should only get sixteen and a half credits, or seventeen, whatever the state is. It's saying that, hey, if you hit this, you're a graduate, but we don't want you to aim for this. If you want to go to college, this is what colleges require. If you want to go into the military, this is how you can go in at a D-one, D-two, D-three, right? Is I don't want you going in at the bare minimum, but I think setting, as we continue to have our conversations about equity. Um, and we look at it through the equity lens that you used on all of those policies, like you said, we are examining what we're doing. If it doesn't make sense, like making a senior take freshman seminar again, then we change it. And so I, I do want that to be clear, is I'm not advocating for lowering any bar. What I'm saying is, I want the bar to be at a place in which our students can excel and achieve. And that we aim and teach them to shoot for the stars. Uh, what I'm going to suggest for both of these policies is we, May is tough. But that we just do a, a two-hour workshop to work through some of these issues. Yeah, two hours.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, um.
But hey, we start with two, that's the, you know, ambitious, is that we start with two to get through them, because we got to take these off the docket. And it's important work, but Kathy only got one thing which she can change, and that is that we do not want freshman seminar to be a credit. But like the nineteen credit, or, you know, do we go with the state minimum, I think we all have to.
It was, it was.
It wa- but on the sheet, it wa- it came in as, it, it showed as part of one of the credits, so.
Oh, right, but not to do credit recovery?
It showed as one of the graduation requirements, but again, it's.
Cause I want to know what they're doing now.
It shows as one of the graduation requirements, but there is a built-in process. For allowing a committee to waive requirements that are not the state minimum requirements. If appropriate for any particular students, so they were trying to reach a balance. Um, with somewhat of this discussion that you all are having right now. Because of the importance in Ms. Rice De La Sanchez, you can correct me if I'm not stating this accurately, or Ms. Gonzalez, you can. They wanted to reach the balance of ensuring the academic rigor and maintaining that requirement and expectation of a full course schedule. Which if you went through the full day, would get you to twenty-six credits. Um, but they didn't want to have things like those courses that are participation courses under ISB regulations. Which be PE, health, freshman seminar, be something that would ultimately prevent the student from graduating. Which is why they put that kind of waiver committee piece in place. Um, to be a check and balance on that and allow those students who had met the academic criteria to graduate. Did I miss anything? We, there might be a little tweaking I need to do with the language still, but.
Yeah.
Cause I was looking for something you kept saying, and I'm not seeing it, so.
So what the board is saying on this item.
Workshop that needs to be done.
Yes.
Yeah, this has to be a workshop, and so we'll deal with. Do we have withdrawal, and that's the thing, so we have to have the venue for you to get them, because Ms. And this is what we talk about with policy work being the board. Ms. Leguizamo can't just make a suggestion, and because we can't bring it to the board, it gets made in the policy, and vice versa. Just because other board members aren't weighing in, doesn't mean that we pass a policy that we don't really agree with. So what I'm proposing is that we have our recommendation from the committees. We do a workshop dedicated to just getting through these, Kathy, if you can kind of maybe give us some guiding questions. And just yes or no, like we did similar to, uh, the P-Tech handbook.
Is it okay if Kathy works with Ms. Jennifer Rice De La Sanchez?
Oh, a hundred percent.
I just want to take, um, Ms. Um, Rice De La Sanchez, let the committee. Um, and so she can give us some guiding questions, and maybe you can convene your committee back. So that they can help with that input, and, um, since it will be an open meeting, we can invite them to the workshop at that time.
And I will say, and I'm, I'm being, um, I'm speaking for everybody else. I've reviewed item nineteen B, I don't know if curriculum, anybody still had questions on, otherwise I would be prepared to work on, act on that. But I, I think.
I would wait.
Okay.
Curriculum, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it as well.
Very, very high level, I think the really, the, the meat and the potatoes is within graduation requirements.
Yeah.
So. I don't know where other board members.
To, to honor Ms. Hannah's request, if it can be summed up in a ten-minute conversation, and then we move on to the graduation requirement. I would like to give her the opportunity to at least review it. Um, Ms. Hannah, if you do have any questions after reviewing, I would suggest that you send those to Kathy and me. Um, but we can do that right at the start of whatever workshop date we set, and if there's an agreement, we move forward. And then, uh, we can, uh, cause I don't think that there will be a lot. Um, and then we can do nineteen A is going to be a majority of that. Um, if, again, I'm gonna. Do you rescind, rescind your motion?
Who, me?
Ms. Leguizamo, I think.
Yes, I rescind my, my motion.
And who had the second? Ms. Wasniak, if you rescind your second, thank you. All right, I'm going to ask us to bypass board member time.
I just have to, one thing to say, just one, and it's really important.
Go ahead, Ms. Hannah.
Okay, we have, um, um, if you all did not know. We have, um, our second year girls' track and field. Um, uh, championship.
Yep.
Okay? And this is the, for second year straight. And, but here, here's the, here's, here's the punch. They won't be able to attend, because it's a toss-up. Between whether they're going, between attending their graduation. Or attending the, um, championship games on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And so, um, when we are planning graduations. I would hope, because this is not the first time, but it's also not the second time. That this has taken place, okay? When graduation is being planned, I would hope that the calendars. Of all of the, uh, departments are also being looked at. So that our students don't have, and particularly, thi- this happens every senior graduation.
Yeah, I think.
You, you know, and we, we need to make, um, make some kind of concessions. Where our students don't have to, uh, make a decision of whether they're going to. Uh, attend graduation or their, um, their championship.
Yeah, I think we can do, I know.
Yeah, absolutely.
During graduation in May makes it nearly impossible, I do know that even on the twentieth, there, like for other school graduations. So it's not that we are weird, but I get Ms. Hannah's point, and what she's saying is that we look at all of the calendars. I do think, Ms. Hannah, is there's always going to be some conflict, so do we talk about moving it to June? Would there be a day of the week that worked better, like is there no track meets on Wednesday? So I do take that back, Ms. Hannah, and, um, I hope that. So I do take that back, Ms. Hannah, and, um, I hope that the administration also is taking note to that when they are in that development process.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, because I think the kids, me personally, I think the kids are getting out of school too early.
Again, I think the board made that decision because we wanted them to take the finals before. It was a lot of conversations around it. But, uh, I'm going to ask, Ms. like, Ms. Wozniak?
I just want to say that, um, the Waukegan, um, High School Career and Tech Ed is going to present at the CT, um, at the Art Walk
Awesome.
on the 21st, um, at 6 to 9, at 9, at Three Brothers Theater, the, the bigger one, the 221 North Genesee Street. So I want everybody to come out and support the, our students.
Annie was wonderful.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
With that, I'm going, are there any legal reports, Ms. Vanderbroeck, that I like a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McBride.
Second.
Second by Mr. Riddle. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.